I'd like to call to order the September 17th, 2018 meeting of the Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies, such as this, at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the Board's website at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the Board will be given the opportunity to do so before the Board adjourns for the evening. May we have a roll call, please, Lynda?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti? Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pierre Tribono?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Here.
Thank you. I'm going to move that we now recess to executive session after reading this little preamble here. Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act, NJSA 10:4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters regarding student discipline. This exemption is permitted to be discussed in closed section in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Oh, just that provision, 4-13. Information regarding the Board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to adjourn to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Excellent. A second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call or can we have a voice vote?
Yes. Voice vote.
Voice vote? Can I call it or shall I allow you to? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. All right. Thanks, guys. All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to reconvene to public session. Lynda, do we need a roll call on whether to reconvene or can we just go ahead?
You need a move and a second and a voice vote.
Somebody like to move to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's reconvene. Let's see. The first thing we do is the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag is located where should be. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all. All right, and our first order of business is swearing in our new student representatives. We're so happy to see you guys here. Do you want to introduce yourselves? Just tell us. Oh, I see your names are there. Avery Haley Locke. And how do you, is it Zayu?
Zayu.
Zayu, I'm sorry. Scott just told us, actually, and I immediately forgot. Well, it's nice to meet you both and thank you for being here tonight. And I think Lynda is going to swear you in now? Is that a good time?
Yes, just give me a second.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, when you have time. So you guys are, are you both seniors?
Yep.
High school? Wonderful.
I want to buy Ms. Hoffola a little time. Can you tell us quickly how you came to be selected to be here? Because I know there was quite a vetting process.
Oh, yeah, sure. So, um, sorry. First, we had to do a resume. Is this? How close?
There's all kinds of problems tonight with the most.
So there was a resume and then Ms. Pollak and Ms. Steinberg, they did an interview for us. It was just like a quick getting to know you thing, but also sort of like a time commitment, like seeing if you could have the time commitment and seeing like any prior experiences or like, really like, it was mostly like how you'd really help and like how you'd really represent the students. And, yep, so after the interview, it was based on Student Congress Advisor selection and we were closed.
Yeah, we also filled out a, is this good? Can you hear me?
Barely.
We also filled out a form on, like a Google form about what kinds of things we'd be interested in, like issues in the school that we'd want to address as Board Representatives and why we wanted the position. So we had a resume and a form and then an interview.
We're so excited to have you. Last year, we had very involved Board reps who were always presenting us with student positions and often pushing back against the Board, you know, when there was something that students had a perhaps different position on, and we loved it, so.
I told them as much that the Board really respects and welcomes student input.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we all trust you. Go ahead.
All right, swearing in. Okay. So I'm going to swear in the new Board members. They each have an oath of office that they will read along. They'll repeat after me. And if you can repeat in unison, that would be the most expeditious way we handle it. Okay, so repeat after me, please. I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under authority of the people.
Under authority of the people.
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications.
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by Board policy for the Office of Student Representative.
Prescribed by Board policy for the Office of Student Representative.
To the Board of Education.
To the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, congratulations. Welcome to the Board. And if you would sign the forms, I'm going to give you the second copy so you can sign them also, and I will also sign. And then I'll just need one back.
Welcome. All right, so we'll move ahead with the agenda while you guys are looking for pens. We have a correction to the minutes proposed. It's a correction under personnel for August 20th. Scott, did you want to say something about it or?
No.
I mean, a lot of us, there's any question or I can.
Looks like the effective date of Ms. Rosenberg's appointment has changed. Yes.
Correct. I clarify, Ms. Brady will not be going out until September, September 24th, so that's why we have corrected the minutes. Initially, Ms. Rosenberg would have been with us starting September 1st. First day would have been September 6th with the kids.
Okay. Maybe I'll just do both of the minutes numbers together. Does anybody have questions about their comments about the minutes, regular public and executive for August 20th, our last meeting? All right, does anybody have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected by number 12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, may we have a vote, please?
Sorry. I'm just doing work in the room here.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't wait until the paperwork is done, okay? Just, okay, let me know what I'm doing.
What are we voting on?
To approve the minutes as in number 10, as corrected by number 12.
Nine and 10?
Yes.
Nine and 10.
Oh, sorry, 12. Oh, wait a minute.
Nine is the correction?
Yes, nine and 10. Sorry, 12 is from the old agenda, yes. Nine and 10.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Byer is not here. I'm sorry. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Are we saying yes? Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre Tribono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Yeah, she had to go.
All right, it looks like that passed. Number 12, number 11 is our student representative report. Of course, it's your first day and you have already given us a little background on how you were selected. Did you have anything you wanted to present to the Board at this time?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful, okay. Go for it.
Speak a little closer to the mic.
Oh, yeah.
So, as you know, it's, school is just starting, so we don't have tons to report yet. But from Irving, Irving is holding Spirit Week this week. They had a crazy hat day today. And back to school night is Thursday this week with babysitting provided.
Do you mind a little bit louder? I'm sorry, I'm a little bit deaf in one ear, so that may be the problem.
Bartle is having their Great Expectations Assembly this Friday and back to school night on Monday. The middle school has had a great start to the school year. Sixth grade orientation was on the fourth and the school started on the sixth. Clubs such as the Student Newspaper have begun to meet.
And as for the high school, the students had a tremendous first two weeks of school. On the second day, there were Student Congress elections and Uchichi won the presidency, so congrats to her. Student Congress is also met to decide on Spirit Week themes and hall decorations. Themes, this year's theme will be eras in history. Teen Pep, a new program this year for teaching freshmen about safe sex, is running smoothly. They've obtained packets that will be used for their first session October 1st. The new teen center, Zone 6, recently had a successful grand opening. Some of the high schoolers did help out to make it a great success, such as painting the doors or being part of the youth council. Students are excited to be able to take advantage of such great space. And some parts of the facility and some of the equipment were not completely ready, but we're excited to see how it develops and for the students to have a safe place to do homework, hang out with friends, and just generally have a great time. Additionally, some clubs have already started meetings, while others have dates set and announced for their first meetings. The Model UN team is holding its tryouts on Monday and Thursday, well, it's changed to Tuesday and Thursday. Tuesday and Thursday, while DECA's interest meeting is also scheduled for Thursday. And we wish all of them the best of luck in their endeavors this school year. This year was special and actually the first time the high school tried out a summer reading, half-day, the first day of school. Students were able to gather together in groups and talk about their readings with emphasis on specific topics in each group. The students had a great time getting book suggestions and seeing their friends again on a relaxed day. Our sports teams are also having great successes. In a smashing victory against Wardlaw-Hartridge on September 5th, the girls volleyball team showed their prowess with the scores of 26-24 and 25-17. They also defeated Timothy Christian on September 14th. Girls soccer had a victory against Cavalry Christian with a score of 7-4. Boys soccer is currently 3-0, ranked six in Group 1 Division. And girls tennis is undefeated with four games under their belt against Mother Sutton, Carteret, Dunellen, and Colonia.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Does anybody have questions or comments about that?
I just didn't hear clearly the name of the person who was elected president.
Right, same here, actually. Who was that?
Uchichi, Uchichi Odakonwa.
Oh, Uchichi, yay.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know her, but I've heard good things. Do you guys know, or maybe Scott knows, will the town be publishing any kind of an announcement about the teen center for students at the school? You know, with things like hours and?
There are actually flyers on the halls.
Oh, they're right there.
And.
Wonderful.
I don't think, aside of that, we've made any formal announcements. I know Mr. Burrell, who's the director of the teen center, has been coming around to some of the classes.
Oh, fantastic. That's great.
Push. They do open up tomorrow. I'm not sure if you pointed that out, but tomorrow's the official, official kickoff for the students to make their way. And there's also going to be a special day just for middle school students. I believe those are going to be on Wednesdays, but don't, don't commit me to that. I know it's one day of the week.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, because I had heard that it was only for high schoolers, so then I was sort of confused.
Oh, perhaps, I wasn't made aware of that.
But that wasn't like somebody, like, official, so I was just wondering about that, so.
No, but I can find out.
Yeah.
Email the Board later.
Great Expectations at Bartle, that's the disciplinary assembly probably where they go over all the rules. Is that, does that sound right?
If you want to elaborate?
Not completely sure. I read on their calendar.
Yeah, that's, we're couching it, the Code of Conduct around.
The Code of Conduct, sorry, yes, not.
The Great Expectations we have.
The Code of Conduct, Great Expectations, okay, wonderful.
I thought it would be a bit odd if the kids at Bartle read Great Expectations.
It's never too early, you know?
As opposed to, don't do this. Great Expectations.
We expect that you will not, et cetera. Scott, did you want to go ahead with your report? Thank you.
Yes, so I'd like to do what I do every year around this time and just share with the Board, the community, some photos and elaborate a little bit on how things were going in the first week. Before I take a dive into how things have been going on a daily basis, I just need to remind the Board, the community, that our strategic plan has been updated and now focuses on only three goals as opposed to 11. In the spring, I surveyed staff and heard loud and clearly, loudly and clearly, that we were feeling initiative overload. We were trying to tackle 66 action steps, 11 goals, around four focus areas, four broad categories. And so I approached the Steering Committee made up of 11 representatives from different stakeholder groups in the, in the school community. And they suggested that I work with the leadership team to identify the goals that we kept coming back to time in and out over the last two years since the inception of the first version of the strategic plan back in 2016. We talked about as a leadership team over the summer, those things that are taking a lot of time to implement, that have to do a lot with culture change, which takes time. And from those discussions and the Steering Committee's blessings, we identified the three goals that are going to carry us into this next year, the first of which has to do with the whole child. One of the members of the Steering Committee recommended that I define what whole child means, and I did. Our first goal has us implementing strategies that have to do not just with students' academic success, but their fostering of social, emotional skills. That's what the whole child speaks to. The second goal has to do with our dedicated work around being more culturally responsive, recognizing how diverse we are as a community and making sure that in all we are doing, we are being sensitive to these, to these needs, we are being cognizant of our hidden biases, and we're being careful however we can not to micro regress against students of different ethnicities, races, gender, gender identity, and religious backgrounds. The third goal has a lot more to do with, if anything, the academic performance side of things than the first two goals. We want to continue to update our math and ELA curriculum in particular to focus more on personalizing instruction for students. That's what we mean by differentiated instruction. So those are the three goals that are guiding us. I believe we have something like 10 action steps as opposed to 66 now that we're trying to tackle this year. And I'll report back to the Board in a couple of months on the status of the, of our implementation of those action steps. So now I want to talk about just some important items I think are on the minds of the Board and the community as we start the school year. First of all, I'd like to touch on class size. The topic of class sizes came up in the winter, this past winter, when the Finance Committee, Ms. Hoffola and I, had to tackle a very difficult fiscal year 2019 budget. We, Lynda and I got our, our marching orders from the Board not to alter class sizes, and so we did not. So the numbers I'm sharing with you have not fluctuated drastically from prior years. I'm giving you here an average of our class sizes at the elementary level. And at the middle school, I, rather than break out averages, which is very difficult to do, our PE classes are generally larger, our electives are generally larger class sizes than our, our core subject classes. I'm showing you where we've peaked in terms of class size. Our Math 6A program is the accelerated math program for sixth grade. The Grade 7 Spanish program can also include, even though I've targeted as Grade 7, other grades, students some other grades who want to take a second level of Spanish but may not, may have skipped a year in middle school. And our geometry students tend to be our, our eighth grade students. We run one section of geometry right now. At the high school, numbers in our English classes are a little higher than I'd like to see. 31 and 30 is where we top out in two sections of English 10 honors. The only way we would bring those numbers down is if we opened up an additional section. We'd probably be able to spread them out and have something like 13 students in a, in a class. The only thing that binds us from doing that, well, a couple of things that bind us from doing that. One, we would have to compensate a teacher to pick up an additional section of teaching, a sixth section likely. And two, because we're a small school, we'd have to be sure that, and we don't offer as many class sections as a larger school offer, we have to be sure that we could accommodate the students, other, other aspects of the students' schedules if we were going to take them out of certain sections and spread them out. Now I'd like to move on to give you some idea of how things have been going since September 4. Our first few days were spectacular. We've got tremendously positive feedback from staff about professional development. Almost all of the workshops and/or activities had to do with supporting the strategic plan or responding to teachers' needs as identified through the Professional Development Committee. This is a picture of our keynote speaker, Dr. Maurice Elias, who bolstered the troops and reinforced our efforts to, to focus on the whole child. Dr. Maurice Elias, as you know, is a rock star in the social, emotional world and a local resident. At Irving, I'll talk a little bit about each school and some of the happenings as we kick off the year. At Irving, we finally have a media specialist. This is Ms. Holly Sfat. Some of you may remember Ms. Sfat was a math teacher at the middle school. But when she came back after being on maternity leave for a couple of years, she decided she wanted to go into media. And she has her CERT, Emergency CERT, she's working on her permanent CERT. And here she is setting up the, the media center. She's extremely happy. I had a chance to talk to her. So, so she's excited. It's a part-time position. We didn't add or take away any time that we had planned in the, in the past, so we finally rock on at Irving. Also at Irving, thanks in part to the efforts of the Early Childhood Study, Learning Study Group, and big thanks to Ms. Megan McNally, the new principal, we've incorporated playtime, blocks of playtime in all of our kindergarten and first grade classes. These are snapshots of the, of the schedules. This is the kindergarten schedule. You see, this is actually Ms. Gap's schedule. Every day, she has scheduled at least 15 to 20 minutes of playtime. And our first grade schedule likewise, daily, has scheduled playtime. It's just a small effort towards incorporating more play-based learning in our program. Other steps we've taken, we're going to be expanding the day of play, which was very successful last year. For our student reps who might not know what that is, or probably didn't have it much at the high school, we had a global day of play. One of our Board members, Ruth Byer, who's not here today, turned me on to it and then I passed it along to the staff. And it's a day in which we, we tear down the regular schedules best we can and just infuse play in all of our work. And at Irving, it was just phenomenal. We had parents and guardians dropping off kids, wishing them a happy play day. They were toting, you know, all kinds of toys and board games with them. We're going to expand that, so now we do it four times a year. We'll do it quarterly. We'll also be looking to bring back the playsets. I actually was upstairs in Ms. Parham's first grade class Friday and I noticed, no, today, actually, I was in her class today, and she set up a whole play area, which she said she hadn't had an opportunity to do before when she was downstairs, kindergarten teacher. I'll be reaching out to the Irving faculty to gauge their needs, supply needs, to see if there's a way we could fit within our school's supply budget, the purchase of more, more play-related learning activities. One thing I, I'm showing you a picture of the middle school main office, and it's kind of a random shot, but I do, but before I move on to the other schools, want to touch on something that we've done differently this year in our main offices. You'll notice in every main office now is a kiosk, a desk with a couple of computers that we've set aside for anybody, parent, guardian, member of the community who doesn't have access to a computer can come in and use for whatever reason. It also serves to allow folks who need to register their kids, go right online and do that, those who want to fill out free and reduced breakfast and lunch applications can do so. So every office has two of these computers hooked up to the internet, you can walk right in. This, this desk is actually facing the exterior wall of the main office at the middle school and you can use those computers. At Bartle, flexible seating is alive and well, it's expanding. This is a, this is a first-year teacher who's already been indoctrinated to the way of flexible seating. Something else I want to share with you that, and I'm using the opportunity now that I'm touching, I was up at Bartle, to share this with you. Something else we're doing, the Curriculum Committee is aware that we're trying to make some strides in incorporating more culturally relevant texts in our program and include more activities and lessons that are relevant to what the Almestad Act and Holocaust Education Act have espoused. I'd like to share with the Board, you can pass this around if you'd like, a sample basket of culturally relevant texts that misfit a palsy. Our humanities supervisor just got in the last couple of school days. She's going to be stocking K5, I should say, K8 libraries with some of these sets and in other cases, providing baskets of these materials that can be placed in our leveled libraries that will be leveled for those teachers who want to match up reading leveled books with kids and their just right levels, their comfort reading level zones, so you could just take a quick look through those texts. I want to move on to talking about the middle and high school now. The first couple of days of the middle and high school this year were all about community building. I tell you, and to see this at the high school was, it was very satisfying because in the past, I think, some of our staff who have felt compelled to do more of this work in the area of community building may not have been given the green light to do so, you know, carte blanche to do so, but this year, we're basically directed by our administration, including our new assistant principal, to spend the first day and a half not handing out textbooks, not focusing on, you know, the syllabus and expectations so much as getting people in, getting students and adults in circles, having them talk with each other. This, it's hard for you to see, I just thought to throw it out there as proof that in fact we were doing some of this community building work. These two shots are of the handouts we gave students that guided them the entire first half-day through community building activities. The English teachers, Ms. Krebsky and Ms. Marioni, instead of requiring students throughout the high school to be assessed on their summer reading, the more traditional, in the more traditional manner, a report or a test or some kind of a project, actually integrated community building activities into the themes of the summer reading books. And so students had to do such things as go on a scavenger hunt, they had to meet in small circle talk groups like the one I'm going to show you in a second, around the themes, many of which were related to current news issues, that came out of the work that they read over the summer. Here's an example of a, I think this is Ms. Teal's group that had a circle talk conversation on a high school stage. Speaking of circle talks, which is lingo we use when talking about restorative practices, I know I've talked about this ad nauseam, but I'm going to bring it up again because I'm very, very excited about the addition of certain staff at the high school and the middle school, including new assistant principal at the high school, a youth safety specialist, Mr. Harrison, who, whose role is to build relationships with students. He's not a security guard. I know there was some talk about that in the community. He's not armed. He has already been doing what we've asked him to do, and that is to walk the halls and get to know the students. In fact, I've been spending a lot of time in the morning in the hall, the front lobby, when students are walking in, and there's nothing better than walking in and seeing Ms. Goldine Cooper, our new assistant principal, Mr. Lassiter, and Mr. Harrison. And a lot of students are walking in, high-fiving. Coach Harrison, a lot of our students know Sean Harrison, the youth safety specialist, as one of our football coaches. They still refer to him fondly as the coach. But we also had a full-time dean of restorative practices. Ms. Luxa has set up shop in what is now called the Student Support Center, which is based in the middle school. It's right next to the, the media center for the high school. This is her office, a little quick video I want to show you. She's set up a little comfort area in one corner of her office. And on the other side, on her desk, you saw all kinds of materials that speak about restorative practices. She's incorporated weekly discussion questions that prompt students to come to her office and actually write on chalkboards and whiteboards in her office, answers and ideas. I shared some pictures with the Board via Taylor Notes. She's also been very visible in both the middle and high school. There's a picture of her on the right, speaking with some high school students. She's, she's, her role is going to be primarily to model restorative practices to teachers who we've initially trained but could use clinical support. Her secondary responsibility will be to conduct reactive circles, what some in our community may know more as social justice circles, with groups of students who, or single students and groups of other people, who either have violated the code of conduct, that done harm to other students or other adults in the building, or who just need to have relationships And her tertiary role is to help us focus on that strategic goal I brought up earlier around the whole child. Snapshot on the left is our new assistant principal at the high school. Ms. Keisha Golden Cooper's office is now the small office and the main office at the high school. When you walk in, you hang a left, she's at the edge just beyond the conference room. There's a shot of Mr. Harrison on the left and Ms. Luxa on the right. I often see them together. I think they find some camaraderie in that their job role is very similar. It's really a phenomenal job, and one if I had to come back and do it all over again, I would love to do. I'm, you know, they're basically just there for the kids. They're just there to help, support, using some of the strategies they've learned. Mr. Harrison has been trained, he went through the initial training, the four-day restorative practices training, and he's already stated that he would like to go back with Ms. Golden Cooper to do the second stage of training, which they're looking to do together, probably out in Bethlehem, which is where the International Institute for Restorative Practices is based. Before I take any questions, one other thing I'd like to update the board, the community about is the state of the football program. Zaiyu did a great job running down the scoreboard for us. But the elephant in the room is what mycentraljersey.com blasted on its front, the front of its website, and that is that the Highland Park Football Program is being dismantled, has been suspended. I'd like to say, before I introduce our athletic coordinator, Craig Girvin, that our football program hasn't been disbanded, it hasn't been shut down. We've just altered the schedule. I'll talk about that in a second, as we rebuild potentially for a better year next year. So with that, Mr. Girvin, I'm going to give you the mic.
Hi, everybody. As I think most of you know, last year we finished with 17 players on the football team. Considering that, we decided to withdraw from the Greater Middlesex Conference to give us some more flexibility in our scheduling. So I went out and scheduled a lot of independent games for the varsity team this year. In June, we had a pretty positive sign-up day. We were optimistic, around 30 kids signed up to play football. We thought that that would be pretty good for us, and we would be fine and have a good season. By the time the summer ended and preseason ended in football, we had 19 players. Our first game was against Montclair Kimberly Academy, one of these independent schools that I picked up, hoping that it would be a competitive game for us. We lost that first game 41 to nothing. Three players got hurt, one of them probably injured enough, not seriously, but enough that he will not be continuing. We have picked up a few more players. But after that loss, the coaching staff sat down and really thought hard about what's the best thing, what's in the best interest of our kids and what we should do for the remainder of the season. I said, you know, think about it over the weekend, come back to me on Tuesday of the Labor Day weekend, and then we can move on from there. So with 16 players, and again, a couple of them were injured in that game, so in the end, we have now 19 total players, seven freshmen, three sophomores, five juniors, and four seniors. With those numbers and the concern for the safety of our kids, we decided to suspend the varsity program for the year and play the remaining games of the season at the JV level. One of the biggest questions that people had was, can seniors play in these games? There are technically no rules for JV football in terms of who can play and who cannot. Traditionally, seniors don't play, but we have reached out to all the schools, and all of our kids that are on our team are going to be allowed to play in those games. The concern simply was the safety of the kids. You know, we had a senior was tired and wanted a break in the first game, and we had to throw in a freshman who we felt really wasn't ready, or were concerned about his safety, to be perfectly honest. So that was the decision. The other point that I think you should know is that Montclair Kimberly Academy was an independent school that I thought we would be very competitive with. I just think we maybe overestimated the ability of our kids, and we were not competitive in that game at all. Like I said before, it was 41-0. So with all those factors taken into consideration, we thought the best course of action was to play at the JV level. Moving forward, I think we just have to evaluate and think about what course of action to take. We have a number of options. We could try to play an independent varsity schedule next year, we could continue to play at the JV level, or we could go back into the Greater Middlesex Conference and play at a varsity level there. So I think that's all I have.
Are there any questions, comments from the board?
First, thank you, Mr. Gir, oh, sorry.
I have a question. So what do you think is the issue with the recruitment and what can change to bring those numbers up, say, next year? If anything.
I mean, I think that's a good question. I think that's the most important thing that we need to think about and strategize about how to do it. I know a few years ago, when I was concerned about the numbers in town, we brought in a flag football program to the recreation department. So that program now, I believe, is in its third year. It's pretty popular. There are a lot of kids involved at direct level, but I'm not so sure, you know, flag football's a lot different than tackle football. How well that relates to the numbers in our team, I'm not so sure. The middle school program, because of lack of numbers, a few years ago, we dropped the tackle program. Up until this year, we had a flag football program in the middle school. We, for whatever reasons, budget, lack of numbers, we didn't run it this year. I think that's something we should really consider, you know, bringing back, especially if we can get those numbers. It's a numbers game, and how to recruit, I don't really, I don't have an answer for that. If I did, we've been, you know, we ask every kid, obviously, we don't want to go overboard, but, you know, we encourage kids to play who we think might like the sport.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and giving us a less sensationalistic picture of what was going on than mycentraljersey.com was able to do. So the flag program, did we not, the middle school flag football program, did we in fact not budget for it? I don't remember.
It wasn't cut.
It wasn't cut, okay, so.
Just because of lack of interest.
So there was the option to do it. I don't think we intended to get rid of it.
No, no, I don't.
To mandate that it be gotten rid of.
Yeah, we had very few kids by the end of the program last fall. We just didn't have a lot of interest in the program. That was a big thing.
Do you think, I'm sorry, do you think that, I'm just thinking, as a former, very bad football player through high school, and do you think flag football can prepare kids to play tackle football? That's number one. I know other towns, the towns that we compete against, have, they have middle school, they have Pop Warner, they have a feeder type of a system, which we many years ago had, but we haven't had for a long, long time. So kids that are of that age, what would they do in order to get some sort of experience to play here?
Right, I mean, I do think, I think as you're thinking, that flag football is a lot different. And, you know, it certainly gives you the kids an introduction to the game. It's great, it's a lot of fun, and I think that was the main idea. But it's certainly a lot different, and there's a lot of kids that would play flag football that certainly would not play tackle football. I know there was a little bit of interest in town from a few people to start a Pop Warner program and do those things in Highland Park, but I really don't think there are enough kids. And I think that's the bottom line. Our kids in the past have played Pop Warner football in Edison, North Brunswick, and surrounding towns. So that has been, you know, helpful for us in the past. But again, I just think we have fewer kids doing that these days. In terms of middle school programs, there are very few middle school programs of schools of our size. No Group One school that I know of has a middle school program, or very few. We used to play some of the larger schools, and we had a really hard time playing South Brunswick. We would play their second team and things like that. So that got to be a little bit difficult, and we were down to, again, 13 players in the middle school program three years ago, playing tackle football. And we didn't think that was safe to play there either.
I think it may be in Florida, but in some places, they play a smaller team. I don't know if it's six-man or eight-man.
Eight-man football, mainly in the Dakotas and sparsely populated states out in the Midwest.
Well, but that does, they actually hit each other. They use, they have uniforms and stuff like that, so, but that seems not to be going on here at all.
No, I'm not aware of any, you know, eight-man football in the state of New Jersey, although, who knows?
Well, having seen the game, the one game, the first half, I think as much as I support, you know, a program and support the kids having a place to play, the decision to step back and, you know, make sure everybody's healthy and hopefully get some experience, and then maybe reassess toward the end of the year, seems like a wise, wise move. Just my thought.
One of the things I always loved about having a football program in my school district is the Friday night event. It brings out, you know, it brings about, it's a community-wide event. And I've heard this talk about bringing soccer into the fold Friday night. You want to expand on that a little bit?
Sure. Last season and for the past few seasons, when we did not have a home varsity football game, we had Friday night soccer games. And I think over the last couple of years, we've had very successful, we have a very successful soccer program, and we had nice evening events with fairly large crowds, and we're very happy about that. So this year, for the next three Friday nights, we don't have varsity football games, but we will have soccer under the lights. And, you know, I think last year was really successful, and a lot of people really enjoyed it.
That's great. That was my question as well. When do the JV games, when do they play? Are they not, they're not on Friday nights, they're...
Well, to be perfectly honest, this year, because we canceled the varsity season, I've been scrambling for the past.
I'm sure.
Past two weeks, trying to put a schedule together. Most of the games are four o'clock in the afternoon, some are on Monday, a few are on Friday. As part of the homecoming festivities, we're going to play a football game at four and a soccer game to follow. We do try to keep them a touching game at the end of the season. We're going to play them in the evening, I think a six o'clock game in the mid-November. So, you know, typically four o'clock after school for the JV, but.
Not the best time, but maybe we can get some people out for the games. Wonderful. I thought the soccer is drawing people on Friday nights. That's great. It'd be a shame to miss that. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for putting the safety of our students.
Oh, yeah.
Ahead of any personal feelings that anyone might have about, you know, their glory days on the football team.
Angry letters to mycentraljersey.
Yeah, it's never, it's never easy to change, and it's a tradition, but I do think that, you know, making sure the kids are safe is most important. So thank you for agreeing.
I'll pass that on to the coaches.
Thank you. I'm going to send him home. He's got to go.
Absolutely. Thanks very much.
Zaiyu, do you have a question? Oh, hey, Mr. Girvin? What if our student rep has a question?
Okay, so what do you think are the implications for next year? I think like dropping into the JV team probably sort of hurt team morale and maybe interest in the sport, especially from maybe the incoming eighth graders and from the underclassmen that are playing this year. Do you think it'll sort of impact the way future football, future football programs are like in our school?
Good question, Zaiyu. You learn those questioning techniques in your government class?
The idea, I think, is to play a JV schedule so the team has some degree of success. And with that success, they'll enjoy the sport, and we're hoping that, you know, kids will want to become part of a team that at least has a chance to be successful. I don't know what the eighth grade numbers are. Hopefully, we will get a solid group of maybe six, seven, eight, nine, 10 kids, and then I think we can think about, perhaps we could play at a higher level in the future. But again, big thing was safety for this year, and then, you know, building some success, and hopefully building on that, and some kids will have confidence, really enjoy the sport, and hopefully that'll work out in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That concludes my report.
All right, then it's time for the board committee's reports and recommendations.
Oh, are we going to have questions for the...
Yeah. I apologize, yes, of course.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you know, I'm just struggling through this. Questions, comments?
Go ahead, Monique. Okay. First was a question on the strategic goals that have now been narrowed down to three or goal areas. Where does equity and access fit with the...
That falls under the second goal, around cultural responsiveness.
Okay, because I wasn't clear on how that would be.
So I can pull up, I can show you if you'd like the action steps, so they, it speaks exactly what you're saying. Let me turn the projector on. So this is the goal under which we are considering professional development, the area of cultural responsiveness. We are, our code of conduct review falls under this umbrella. And by the way, anybody can look at the strategic plan, the projector will come up in a second, by going to our district website, and then clicking the strategic plan link. All the action steps are right there.
Right, because I understood the social, emotional, and the restorative practice piece of it, the equity and access, I just didn't see the academic reflected.
Okay, you know what? The projector's taking a while, so how about I just read some of the action steps? So in order to ensure inclusion and support of students of all abilities, races, cultures, religious belief systems, that's the second goal. We are implementing professional development to help school personnel identify, understand it effectively, or there it is, respond to cultural diversity. You'll see the second goal action step, second action step under goal two has us facilitating dialogue among school personnel, leadership, students, all about cultural diversity. Come back to implementing PD, about culturally responsive lesson planning. One of the things I've spoken with the humanities supervisor about that speaks to this is the need for us to bring somebody in, per the curriculum committee's suggestion, to help our teachers better understand how to incorporate what it is the Almestad Act and genocide, I'm sorry, Holocaust Education Act espouses. So that will happen in the spring as they get ready to revamp the entire social studies K-12 curriculum in 2019, 2020. Our look at best practices for detracking some of our programs falls under this category, including the look at the redesigning the middle school math program, and also enhancing what we're doing at the high school by creating honors option courses. So I hope that...
I guess, I think, maybe it's just me, but I think I was, I'm not sure that this specifically addresses the need that we have in our district to make sure that there's equal access to. I know you did speak to the honors option program.
So there was an action step under, I think, one of the, I forgot which focus area it was, and it was about making sure we get more technology in people's hands. That, for instance, we were having this nap look at On Jersey to see if we, Jersey On, rather, to see if we could get people, internet access who didn't have it. We didn't get very far in some of those areas, so we didn't incorporate that action step under this goal. And it's something we could talk about. But again, it's, if we, if we're going to revisit the strategic plan, I'd like to do it as a committee, not just as a board. So we'd have to, I'd have to think about when that would happen. You know, I am having two meetings in the course of the year to reflect on our strategic I don't know if I had you on my email list for that, for one of those committees.
Yeah, I just wonder if that could be a part of the discussion, then, making sure that there is a specific focus, and it's clearly reflected directly in what you have now revised in terms of the strategic plan. Because to me, I'm still not seeing that as prominent as I think it should be, based on the discussions we've been having, at least at the board level.
Right.
Maybe within our equity committee, we can discuss. We also have room for at least one other board member to come in and sit with us and potentially come out with some recommendations as to how that should be implemented within this. That would be my thought, my first thought.
One other board member, did you say?
Well, I mean, we have three. We could have a fourth person to sit in, like rotate in here and there. I don't know. We could have, everybody could come in for one meeting.
If you turn around, you'll see that this is the last, this is last year's, this is an update chart that I included on the strategic plan website. The goal that I think you're referring to is this, the district will ensure the community and school-based resources are provided to support families in need. I think, am I correct?
That's part of it.
That's part of it.
Are you thinking more about sort of making sure everybody has access to AP programs, and people are encouraged to go into the higher-level classes, make sure the counseling, college counseling is really shared with all the students?
I feel like...
Those sort of justice-type issues.
Preparing kids in Bartle and Irving and the middle school to be prepared to go into those classes.
Right, on those tracks, right.
Right, because this is at every level, so definitely district-wide, but trying to make sure that there's equal access, and we're not seeing so many disparities in our academic classes and how disproportionately certain, you know, subgroups are more represented in...
Well, that goes back to the goal that we have, that currently, I think currently exists.
Really? Okay.
That we will...
The detracking, is it, or the...
Right here. Research best practices for promoting mixed ability classes at the high school level? I mean, is that what you're referring to?
I feel like I, I don't know if I'm saying the same thing as you are, Monique, but I feel like this is kind of part of what we talked about in our curriculum committee meeting when I had requested the demographic breakdown of the high school honors and AP classes. So, in our meeting, you know, we had discussed getting those numbers and I gave a really late request, admittedly. I think it was like 24 hours before our meeting. But being that we have a digital process for grading and for attendance and other kinds of, I would assume, demographic information, you know, I expected that 24 hours wouldn't be an unreasonable amount of time to get the numbers because I was under the impression that we were keeping tabs on who was where. And, and, you know, my, I have a senior as well this year, as you know, and I got a list of who was going to be on the National Honor Society. And that list, because I know these, these children personally, I know their background. They're all white students, a few Asian students, and there was one mixed-race student. And both of the students' parents are professors. So...
Could I inter, how many students are in that group of National, is it like 100 people in National Honor Society?
Twenty-something.
It was a few dozen.
Okay, I just wanted to scale. Thanks.
Yeah. I don't remember the exact amount, but, so, I think what I'm saying is similar to what Monique is saying, is that my understanding was that we were, you know, keeping this top of mind, front of our minds about who was where and who was not...
We are, but keep in mind, it's maybe in the second week of school.
No, no, I'm talking personally as a board member. I mean, this is my fourth year. We campaigned on this five years ago, how when you walk through the hallways, you see a classroom full of black and brown students and a classroom full of white and Asian students. And I'm sure that our students here can probably, you know, attest to similar experiences.
Yeah, if I could interject, I think that part of the issue of separation among races in different levels of classes...
A little bit louder if you don't mind. Sorry. Thank you so much. I know it's hard.
I think a lot of it, if not mainly contributing to, but is our school counselors. I think that personally is what I wanted to focus on as being a board representative, was improving how much we see our school counselors, how much of a input they have, or not input, but how involved they are in the college application process, how involved they are in picking classes and scheduling. I think that it's important for these counselors to really get like in touch and close with their students that they're meeting with because while I do think it's really great that we have these new programs with restorative practices and, and other things, I think that those are great for social, the social aspect of school, but I think that the academic side definitely could, could stand to catch up. And I think definitely this year, the scheduling has been really backed up. I think the counselors are doing a great job, but I think that they, they need a lot of help. I think they, they're kind of just overwhelmed. We have about, we have two counselors, I think.
Yeah, and one for freshmen.
Yeah.
How many? Two?
Two, two counselors for sophomores, the seniors, and one specifically for the freshmen.
So, so three overall.
Thank you.
And I think it could definitely benefit to considering hiring another one. I'm not sure, you know, if that's my place to say that.
No, no, it's definitely a place to say that. It doesn't necessarily mean we have the money for it, but it's something for us to consider in our next budget.
Evaluating the process that, or how they address the situation.
Right. Do you think that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
If I could add on to what they said. So personally, I submitted an application for scheduling changes on the first Friday we had in school. And I wasn't seen until like a full week afterwards, which was the last day for the independent study I was applying for. And I just feel like it was very, sort of a tedious experience because I know the counselors are doing the best they can, but really, as Avery said, they're really overwhelmed. There's too many students to deal with, all on their own. And so it was really sort of like, I, I sort of felt rushed in like my meeting. I wasn't able to fully go through and I completely forgot about some stuff I was supposed to ask her. And so I feel like if we did hi, well, if we could possibly have another counselor in order to help the students, I feel like we'd actually be able to like get all the information we need, especially since like, I don't know, but like college apps are supposed to be coming up and all that stuff, but like none of the guidance counselors have said anything about it or anything like that or really offered any suggestions for us. And I just feel like it's, I know like they're doing the best they can and there's way too many people, but it's like they're not, we aren't getting like the full support we need as students.
So that's a problem. And also, I mean, they're overwhelmed just sort of doing their jobs. It sounds like the basic things they have to do, like schedule people. And also we, you know, we're asking them to sort of encourage students who maybe don't have family members who went to college, encourage those students to, you know, consider being on a college track and to consider classes. So we're asking a lot of them. Is any of that feasible for them to do, to be part of the process of lifting people up to higher academic tracks? I don't mean tracks, but to sort of setting their academic goals a little bit higher, encouraging students who might not want to take an advanced class to do so?
The question is, do we need more staff to do that? Is that...
Are counselors able to do that right now? Like, you know, you were saying, Avery, I think that in terms of the, the separation of the different subgroups, one issue there might be that counselors don't have a lot of time, to state the obvious, to, you know, encourage a student who's sort of maybe traditionally taken lower-level classes and maybe their parents didn't go to college. You know, it'd be great to have a counselor who could sit with that student and say, "Look, I think you can do this if you want to, if you're interested." But is that just an impossible task for our counselors, given how much work?
Well, I don't know if it's impossible, but I have, since I have gotten to this school district, I have heard the same thing. We are short-staffed in the area of guidance. We cut a guidance supervisor back in, I don't know, 2014, 2015, right before I got here. And ever since then, Mr. Lassiter has been saying, "We've been hurting." We got back a, an eighth, ninth-grade counselor, but that, like you suggested, that person's only serving one grade. It's tough. It is really difficult. I mean, how do our, how do, if our ratio is something like 250 to 300 to one, or maybe like more like 175 to 200 to one, how does this counselor personalize, how does a counselor understand a particular student's needs? But look, our budget priorities have been what they are. I mean, we decided we needed to focus right now on safety and security and improving our work around climate. Maybe this is the next step, if we could find a way to do it within the budget.
Yeah, I would hate to sort of lose that emphasis with a focus on cultural diversity and cultural responsiveness, which are very, very important. And it's wonderful to see those books. I mean, that's just, that's fantastic to see Mrs. Fuddopaul, these books going around. But, you know, the other part of that sort of general area of issues is, is the equity and the justice issue, you know, of not letting students fall behind because they don't come with the same resources, you know. So, I don't know.
And just to interject, just again, to follow up there, that it really is about, you know, the academic piece of this, that I feel like it's been somewhat minimized in what I've read here, and not as bold as what I would have hoped to have seen based on the discussions we've had and what we know is a continuing issue here. And the disparities are rampant. And as IU pointed out, it, when it gets to the high school level, then you're talking about kids who, and we know from certain students who've had experiences in the past, past year, but not getting the proper guidance in terms of college application processes. Certain students who may not have parents at home that can guide them through this process are at a severe deficit. So if we're not really continuing to make this central and integral, clearly articulated in our strategic plan, I'm afraid that it's going to get lost in terms of focus, because we can talk about detracking or, you know, providing more access, mixed ability grouping, if that's what we want to say it's called, but that's not exactly the same as saying we're going to make sure that all the different subgroups have access to...
Well, perhaps what we need to do more of...
Starting all through the levels, not just high.
You know, I believe, you know how I feel about school reform and culture change? I've talked a lot about the need to change the mindset, the way people think. Maybe I haven't done enough to change the culture to be such that people realize how important this is, that, all right, this is what we're about. We're going to be about providing equity to all of our kids, but particularly in these areas. I mean, we put certain strategies in place. We're trying to get people to recognize what their implicit biases are. But look, I have a learning curve of my own I need to overcome. And by the way, one way I'm going to do that, I'm hoping, is to, to meet with people in February down in Atlanta who specialize in this. So I'm semi, you and I are going to be going to a conference together on, on just this topic.
Which topic? I'm sorry, I didn't...
It's actually, I'll, I'll show you the conference in a second, but on equity and, and culture change. I mean, I, look, I can only go so far until we reach a saturation point at which I need to do more on my end to get everybody to go that next step. And I, I'm at a deficit. I mean, this is new territory for me. So when I get a chance, I'll show you the conference. But I, I need to reach out to Chris Enton and other people of that nature who know this stuff. I do. And I'll, that'll be my effort. Now, Monique, if you feel like we need to codify this on a greater level, then that's something we need to bring up at our next strategic plan meeting.
I'd appreciate that. And maybe even in consultation with some of these experts, as you said, that you will be actually in meeting with, not maybe formally, but at a conference or, you know, just someone who could even sort of be an advisory role to, to help make sure that there is clear articulation of that and focus beyond the cultural recognition of, of our student body, but making sure that beyond that, there is that breaking down barriers in terms of the academic sections in our schools.
So, I don't, oh, sorry. I don't think that it's actually a problem of access, it's a problem of like, like anyone telling them to do it. It's like, I feel like no one's really like encouraging them to do it, which is why they're not doing it. It's not that they can't do it. It's not that they don't have access to it, because honestly, if you want to go into a higher-level class, all you have to do is get your parents to sign a waiver. But I think it's the problem with that, no one's telling them to do it and no one's like really spurring them on in order to motivate them, in order to do this. I feel like there's so many smart minority students in our school, but the only problem is that they're not really getting like the push they need in order to actually go into the higher-level classes.
Well, I think the, the issue you were dealing with here is really an issue of social capital. And, you know, it's, it's an ugly issue. It's one that I don't think is easy to address, but that as board representatives and members of the board, we have to. And it really kind of boils down to, when you look at the statistics, minority students don't always have the best support at home or in their communities as Asian students or white students. And I think that, you know, when you have that lack of support, the only person you can really turn to is a school counselor. And we need to be backing up and providing that where, you know, some people are lacking. And, you know, I'm, this is a really complex issue. You know, there's lots of sides. So I think I would like to agree, we should take a look at some studies, invite some experts, see what is the best way to approach this. A counselor might not be the best way. I mean, I think that probably would be, but, you know, from what we find out or what, you know, we derive, I think we need to really be addressing this because this is, in my opinion, one of the biggest issues our school faces.
Right. Yeah, agreed. And that's all I was basically trying to say, is I thought that's what we had all, as a board, been discussing over the past half of the year that I've been on board. And I just feel like that was lost a little bit and muddied a little bit here.
One thing we might do today, tonight, later, when we discuss the board goals, is incorporate what you might see as the language we should need to incorporate to the board goals, that I could then transpose into the strategic plan. This is the conference I was mentioning to you, by the way. It's taking place in Atlanta come February.
Cool.
Yeah, here are the speakers.
Chris Enton.
So, I'll report back to the board after I...
Scott, did we, this is a small part of it, but did we expand the honors option program to include in addition this year, the honors, the English?
English, we did.
We did do that. Okay, so those, so now we have two
Correct.
Class areas. So something to think about. Again, it's a small part of it because there's much more deep thinking we have to do about it, and especially at the lower grades, but expanding that program out much, much more in the high school.
There was two things I wanted to say. One was a suggestion to bring in some, someone as a kind of consultant, not necessarily as a professional consultant who we would hire, but someone for, for us to reach out to. And that's a former high school, sorry, former Highland Park student who became a superintendent in the Freehold Township Schools. And we met him last fall down in...
Samson.
Yeah, Chuck Samson. And so we met him at the, at the board conference. And I would, I would love to ask him to come speak to us if he would be willing as a board, because he is from this district, so he knows what this district is about in a way that we couldn't possibly, excuse me, as parents. He knows the district as a student. And, and he was one of those underachieving students who decided that, you know, he didn't want to be an underachiever anymore and had a really tough time gaining access, even though he was, you know, middle-class, white kid, you know, he had trouble getting up to the higher tracks because he had been in those lower tracks all along. So, so I would love for, for us to invite him to speak. I don't know if that's possible, but I, I think he's, he's someone who could give us maybe some, some insight about this in a generational sense and also a professional sense. And then also, I wanted to ask about the first day at the high school, because I have three very different children and two of them are in the high school. And one of them thought that the circle talks was, you know, kind of interesting. And the other one thought that it was torture. And so I have an introvert and an extrovert, and you'd never guess who's who, looking at them. But it's, it's kind of cool what was happening. I really loved that presentation that you gave about the, the circle talk and kind of the community building being incorporated with the English assignment for the summer. I just wanted to make sure that we were continuing on that path with diversity in mind. There are some kids who, they just can't present, you know, they can write five pages, no problem. They can draw you a comic book about what they read. But, you know, that getting up and speaking in front of a, a group of people, even though you know most of those kids your whole life, might be something that is, something that we're not being sensitive to. So I, I just, that was my reaction to it as a parent and also as a board member, thinking that, you know, as far as being sensitive to cultural diversity, there's the culture of personality, you know, so that there's those kids who might have felt put on the spot and really did a great job and loved their book, but couldn't really present at all. And that was something that they, you know, could have possibly been stressing about. But I love the idea of making it a community event. That was really cool.
That was all Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Golden Cooper.
All right. Other questions or comments about the presentation?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say I love the kiosk in the office.
Oh, me too. That's fantastic.
So I made that note to, to make that comment. And then I did just have a question really quick about how the new staff, the new staff at the high school were introduced. I'm assuming there was some sort of introduction of who's who and their roles in the beginning of the year, because...
I know Mr. Lassiter had a formal assembly, didn't he, with all the students? Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, we had an assembly where he addressed the, the co-principal, is that her title?
Well, no, she's the assistant principal.
Assistant principal, yeah. And the new dean of restorative practices.
Great.
And also, oh, safety.
Yeah, yeah. So they were introduced, also in gym classes, too.
And the youth safety specialist as well was introduced as such.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Ms. Golden Cooper, she went around to every single gym class in order just to introduce herself, talk about like her experiences and sort of get to know the students and sort of get, start to bond with the students.
All right, let's move on to our committee reports and recommendations. And the first one up is Michelle with Curriculum and Instruction, please.
As you can tell, I go on forever. I'm going to carry, keep it really, really short.
I'm going to carry, keep it really, really short. Okay, so we did the agenda review at our meeting this week, and by the way, we were all there. Yay us. We all made it. Approval of field trip requests is item number one, and there is not that long a list there. It looks like, it looks like there's a couple for the high school, and some really cool trips there, but my favorite, I just have to say, is the Dodge Poetry Festival in Newark. I'm super excited that our kids are going. So there's that. And item number two is, sorry, the approval of the memorandum of agreement between the high school Highland Park Public Schools and Rutgers University Graduate School of Applied Psychology and Professional Psychology. So this would be paraprofessional behavior support coaching, which would come at no cost through graduate students at Rutgers coming into the district. So that's a win-win, right? Number three is the approval of the curriculum for kindergarten math through fourth grade math, and then a revised Makerspace curriculum from sixth through eighth grade. So we had talked about how the curriculum had not been revised previous, and it was, it was, I don't know if you want to speak...
Well, it was strictly aligned to the everyday math text.
Right.
It was almost like a copy of the text, teacher's edition. So what we've done now is we've aligned it more with the new practices, Concorde Math practices that teachers are falling in love with. I've asked Dr. Nikosia to come speak with the board in October, so she's going to do that, give you an overview of what Concorde Math really is.
So like, the long and the short of it was basically that we have math teachers who really might not have considered themselves to be mathematicians, like, at any level. You said that. You actually said that at one of our meetings, so good job. They now, after doing training and coursework at Concorde Math, as educators, they are confidently walking into the classroom as mathematicians to impart their mathematical wisdom to the students. And they seem to be having a lot of fun. They're using what looked like toys, which are basically like math manipulatives, to do a lot of this work. So it's pretty exciting, especially for that grade level, from kindergarten through fourth grade. So we have math teachers who are not afraid to teach math. It's so cool. Yeah. So item number four is the approval of the university graduate students. So they're coming from Rutgers Mason Gross, which is amazing, to teach elementary music with Ms. Martinetti, and also from Toro College as early childhood special education students to teach with Ms. Koush and Ms. Vonnelski. Number five is the approval of the Rutgers University Fall Conversation Cafe program, and this is for the months September through December, and that's when members of the community of parents and other community members who are learning English as a second language come to speak with graduate students from Rutgers School of Education to learn in immersion environment, to learn English together. So they sit and do conversations several times during the month, and it's several hours. I think we provide them with pizza...
Childcare.
Yeah, childcare, and I have a friend who actually went through the program. I never mentioned that in our meeting, but yeah, it's a great, great program. And the only cost is pizza for us, isn't it?
Sure.
The only cost on us is pizza for that program.
Yeah, which we take out of our Title I funds, or Title III funds.
Yeah, so...
Paid for by the federal government.
Not much, yeah. And that is the end of the curriculum agenda. We also had some other discussion in terms of the high school collaboration with Rutgers. Fifteen high school students are to be trained to teach their peers about personal wellness. So this was separate from the teen pep program. This is in addition to teen pep. So this is more personal wellness, not specific to reproduction or sexual health. Number four that we spoke about in our curriculum meeting was the K through 12 cultural relevance and the additions, or the supplements, I guess, to the current curricula for, well, we were talking about the curricula in general, not specific to history or English, but to infuse what is mandated by the state of New Jersey through the Amistad Act, as well as the Holocaust Act. So I encourage everyone to look those up on the Department of Education website. The Amistad Act is one that I feel very positive about and that we're making good progress on, because it's not a little thing that our idea of American history is Eurocentric. It completely erases the, it's, it's hard to even express it. It's hard to express how we somehow have managed to go through so many years of living and going through our schools without understanding African-American history. Not in terms of African-American history, but in terms of the relevance of African-Americans in this, in this country. So the Amistad Act is infusing that history and that rich culture into our current American history. So, like I said, it's hard to really wrap our heads around, and we're making good progress on it. And we did discuss calling in some professional consulting help, so that we could do a good job of infusing that information, which is a tremendous body of information into our curricula district-wide. So that would be through, from kindergarten through 12th grade. And that is a work in progress. There is a mandate on the books. Hardly any districts in New Jersey have really accomplished that goal of meeting that mandate, so I'm proud that we have it on the radar. And number five on our list during our meeting was to review the demographic breakdown of high school honors and AP classes. So we're looking forward to that information. Mr. Laster is putting that together for us, and I feel like that is going to be tremendously important to the entire board and the entire administration, that we get a handle on who's where and why. And that concludes my report.
Does anyone have, excuse me, questions or comments about Michelle's report? Nobody? Okay, we'll move on to Mark, please, with finance and facilities.
Thank you, Ann. Let me move a little closer here. I have all my papers in front of me.
Two, I know, it's overwhelming.
So the finance committee met this evening before the board meeting. First, I'd like to thank Gary, our maintenance staff, for installing the updated air conditioning so we could have the meeting here today.
Thank you.
And it's so cold that I didn't know in advance, I brought a sweater, because I was freezing. So we met before the meeting, we went over the, we went over the agenda items. So the first thing to say is that the items numbers six through nine are going to be tabled. So when I move them later, I'll move to do numbers one through five, and then 10 and on, and six through nine will be tabled per Linda's direction. So we went through the items. The items one through five are our usual bill lists. Item 10 is contractors for professional services. That is mostly around our special ed needs, with the exception of the membership with the Rutgers Graduate Student School of Education, which for the first time has a fee to become a member of the network membership, RESA Middle Grades Network Membership. And then Mr. Graham as carpenter for Fall Drama. Otherwise, Owen and Mr. Jackson as well. But the rest of these are special ed, as well as the five point, five dash zero investigations, which is a investigative unit, which we've had look at whether certain people in town are actually residents, sending their children here. And we may expand on that. We're discussing expanding on that. Eleven, pardon me, too many papers, is it? Item 11, items 11, item 11 is regards to out-of-district placements. We have had, we discussed it later in our meeting, we've had some children move out of district, we've had some children move into district who are out-of-district placements, and typically quite expensive. You can see the numbers here, $66,000 per year, or $56,000 per year. I'll talk about, a little bit more about that in a moment. We did receive $76,560 in reimbursement of 2017-18 non-public school transportation costs. We did receive an item, and 13 is spending it. Item 14 is receiving $294,337 in extraordinary special aid, education aid, much of which we've allocated in advance for the year, but it does include the $94,337 that we did not budget for this, this current school year. So in item 15, we're putting that towards expenses that were otherwise not budgeted, and making up that difference. Item 16 is a pass-through to a non-public school per state regulations, so we have to read that into the record. We're not paying for this, the state is. And item 17 is approval of bus companies for student athletic transportation, and that's because we, we did not get bids from the usual services, the bus services. These are coach buses, they're more expensive, but they can provide them. So we have to read this into the record. I did miss one small thing. Item, item 10, on, under Cheyana Levy, non-public tutor, it should be $3,000. The sharp sign is incorrect, it should be $3,000, and it should say funded by ESA Title I. So that's funded by the federal government. And I, okay, so that's the agenda items. There are a handful of other items we discussed. Let me just see where I want to start. Okay, so we discussed out-of-district special education placements, and we would be slightly ahead in that more children left the district than entered the district. I think the number is $43,000 ahead of these very, very expensive special education placements. But we learned a few weeks ago, we had three students taken out of district by parents unilaterally, and the cost we're estimating on that is probably going to be about $200,000. And it is what it is. There's another case where parents are interested in us paying for a school in the far west, I mean, in the west, in Utah.
In Utah?
Yeah, and so we discussed that as well, but we're not thinking that that will need to be budgeted. Let us just say. Um, let's see. We just, we went over the, the running list that we do every month of unforeseen revenues and expenses for this year, and at this moment, we are virtually even, not counting, not counting the, the, well, perhaps, not counting the out-of-district, those out-of-district placements. On the other hand, we may have, we may have another 200,000 that we, 200-plus thousand that we didn't know we were getting, so we'll see. These wash out over the year. I don't want to get too specific, because we're just not sure yet. The enrollment, we got the enrollment report as of the first week. We're lower than the end of school year in June, we're higher than we were last September. Linda wasn't sure whether this included students who haven't come at all, meaning they've dropped out of the district. So in the next month's report in October, we'll have a much better idea, but we're at the kind of steady state we've been the last few years. The auditors were here the last week of August, and they're working with Linda. That'll give us an idea of that extra money that Linda thinks we may or may not have. They'll work with her on that, but the whole audit, which is, you know, is a big deal, it's a big lot of work for Linda and, you know, for us to review. And then Linda and Scott mentioned to us meetings with the food service manager. I do want to present this to the board. We've had this ongoing issue of people not paying their negative lunch account balances for the students, for their children, and we, as a board, voted that no child should not be fed. So if someone owes money, we, we feed their children. But the account balances are very large. Something that other districts do is take some other kinds of action against, action's the wrong word, but take some action, I guess is the only way to put it, against the, or with the parents. And one suggestion done elsewhere was to, was to consider making access to the Genesis system, dependent on maintaining a balance. This is not necessarily for parents who have come forward and say, I can't pay, I really literally can't pay. And I'm willing to talk to you about it, although we certainly don't want to not get paid. It's really about parents who never respond to requests. People are getting multiple responses and just blowing us off. And it's thousands and thousands of dollars, not obviously owed by any single family, but there needs to be some way to do this, to get, recapture that money. And this is a way to do it without harming the children. So we're discussing that, and I think the sense of the committee was to have Linda and Scott come back with a firm proposal to the board on doing something like this, not at this meeting, you know, obviously, but in the future.
Mark, can you explain what you mean again? I'm sorry.
Oh, not giving those parents access to the student, the student system, the Genesis system. So they would be cut off from that system if they owed, you know, significant money to, to, to the district.
And had not responded to multiple notices.
And had not responded to us.
Just to prompt them to call us.
Yeah, thanks, Ann. And that's really the major items. What we'll do, I don't know if I missed anything. What I'll do is, as I said, was I'll be moving one through five, and then six, 10, pardon me, 10 through 17, when we actually move these items.
Okay. Fantastic.
Good, thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mark?
Two questions. The first one, what's the actual enrollment number at the beginning of this year?
1640.
1640.
And we ended the year at 1658. Again, Linda has a suspicion that that 1640 may be high...
Yeah.
Because until a student hasn't been here 10 days, we can't, if they've moved, for instance, we can't take them off the rolls. At the end of last year, I'm sorry, at the beginning of last year, the number was 1598. So we're up about 40 students, assuming we've captured all the numbers.
Okay. And then the second question, related to unanticipated expenses. I think it was last year, we identified that the crossing guards were costing us more because of the schedule change at the high school, but it was no cost to us, because the town still owed us money.
I think the town covers that cost completely. It's nothing we incur.
There's no cost to us? Okay.
They budgeted appropriately this year, so we're good. They don't have that issue going into this year.
I had a question.
Yes.
Could you specify about the 5-0 investigations expenses on the...
Yeah, that's the, that's, yeah, that's a private investigator who was hired to investigate whether people were really residents of Highland Park. We've had cases in the past that are very, very, very inexpensive, in the, like, $100 or less to have an investigator check. We had a case last year where someone enrolled a child in the school system, but in fact, didn't live here. And this was a child who would have cost us $100,000 a year of out-of-district placement for many years. And so if there is a, any, any, any reason to believe that somebody isn't a resident, we had a few cases, we have the investigator check whether they really live where they say they do.
Just to be clear, this is not something that we like to do, and we, we talked about it quite a bit last time around, and some of us were like, no, you know, we don't want to make people feel unwelcome, because they didn't return a letter. But my understanding is that this doesn't happen until multiple letters have not been returned from the person. returned from the person. And although, obviously, we will strive to, you know, apply this fairly, you know, investigate people by the same requirements, I mean, the real reason we need it is because of some of these special ed expenses, unfortunately. You know, if a student is enrolling in the district and then going to an out-of-district placement that costs eighty thousand dollars a year, that's something we just can't ask Highland Park to pay for, our Highland Park residents. You know, that has to be paid for by Edison residents or whoever it is. So that's the real need for it. How do you feel about it? It's concerning, I know.
No, I was, I didn't know if you meant residents in terms of, like, county districts or residents in terms of US state residents.
Oh, no, no, this is, this is living in the town of Highland Park. Someone puts down a Highland Park address, but, for instance, a relative lives there and the child doesn't really live there. That's what we're, you know, and if you can save, because they're, they, they like the excellent education here, or they like that the child will be sent to an excellent out-of-district school to get, you know, special education help, then there's some impetus perhaps to do this. But it's, no, it's all about whether, it's not about where they were born or what their immigration status is.
Oh, God, no.
Or anything like that. It's simply, do they, do they live in town?
And, Mark, do we know how many, or Scott, maybe, how many families were subject to an investigation last year, approximately? Like, in neighborhood of ten and the neighborhood of five?
Well, last year, we did only the one.
Just that one?
Just one, okay.
This year, three.
Okay.
I have to, so I want to clarify, though, that not only must a student on paper live in town, but the student must domicile in town as well. Sometimes people will rent a property, or they'll purchase a property and call that their residency in town, but the student, the child, might live somewhere else. That's not acceptable. So you have to actually domicile, live.
So how does, could this be conflicting for undocumented students? Or as long as they reside in Highland Park, would that be no problem for them?
It's no problem if they live in Highland Park. It's really all about, in the morning, do you see the child getting into a car or walking to school from the Highland Park address or from their real address? And that's what we found last year.
Okay, yeah.
There's nothing to do with immigration status.
Okay, and I just have a question about, like, the page in the budget one, the page after the five-oh investigations, there's, like, two pages of a bunch of names. What are these names for?
Is that Source for Teachers?
A Rutgers graduate? Which line? You're on page five, number ten, is that?
This is, no, in the other packet, for the one that starts with the field trips.
Oh, the field trips, right.
Yeah. There's a page after the five-oh investigations with, like, a bunch of names. I was just wondering if that's, like, connected or?
Where is that page?
Source for Teachers.
Oh, yeah, that's not labeled, is it? Yes. Is that?
That may be the Source for Teachers.
Is that indeed Source for Teachers? This enormous list of?
Let me check one second. I have to pull up on my computer.
I believe it's Source for Teachers, but Scott will check. That's a good question.
That's for the substitute, that's for the substitute teachers. That's a list of substitute teachers, if it is Source for Teachers.
As a formal matter, we approve the names of anyone our contractor might send to us.
That's coming up next.
That's coming up now, right.
That's under personnel.
Oh, that's under personnel, oh, sorry. We'll hear more about that.
Judy will be doing it in a moment.
Don't spoil the surprise.
I can't pull up. Do you have that? Yes, the Source for Teachers sub-list.
The contractor is called Source for Teachers, and they have a giant list of names they give us every month of people that might be assigned to our school. Thank you. Sure, absolutely. All right, are there questions about finances and facilities? No? Okay, then it's time for personnel with Judy, please.
Okay, so we met on Friday, which was different for us, just two, two members, Ann and myself and Scott was there. It was a light meeting, we mostly discussed the items on the agenda, but we did also discuss a couple of other issues. We went over the job description, updated job descriptions for the curriculum supervisors and Jen Knapp. What is Jen's, Jen Knapp's official position?
I'm sorry, Jen.
Yeah, what's your official title?
Supervisor of District Initiatives and Special Projects.
Yes, so we, thank you, I'll never remember that. But yes, so we went over their, their job descriptions. And then we also discussed the issue that we seem to be kind of having a lot of resignations of para-professionals, and we weren't really sure the reason about that, so we asked Scott to look into that, to see if there's any rationale. And then besides that, it's the agenda items, so I'll go through, lengthy as usual. As we said, number one is the approval of the list of the Source for Teachers subs. Number two, we have a resignation of a maternity leave elementary school teacher, Julianne Erdy, who we thought was going to be starting, but has changed her mind, so that's off. Number three, we have a resignation of a para at Irving. Same with number four. Five is approval of a medical leave employee, one zero nine five, from September 12 through October 14. Six, approval of unpaid family leave employee, four six one four, from September 4 until estimated December 4, return date of December 5. We have another unpaid extended leave, number seven, employees, four six two one, from October until June 30, 2019. And we have a maternity disability childcare leave of absence request, that's number eight. Number nine is the, the community liaison job description, which I'm totally blanking out now.
I can collaborate.
Yeah, I remember us talking about it with Mizzo, but I don't remember details about.
So the middle school obtained some additional funds, because it's a target school, according to the Department of Education, and Ms. Osemay would like to use the funds to hire, she's restricted, by the way, in what she could use the funds for. One of the things she can't do is what she would like to do, which is hire somebody to act as a go-between for the school and the Hispanic community, especially those who don't speak English in our, in our school community. So this is a job description that she and I created, we're proposing to the board. If the board approves it, our next step will be likely to work with HPEA to negotiate a sidebar agreement for the compensation for the position, and then we'll post the job. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I hope. If there are any questions, feel free, I should answer after Judy's presentation.
So ten, eleven, and twelve were the revised job descrip, excuse me, ten and eleven were the revised job descriptions for Dr. Nikosia, Jen Knapp, and Rebecca Fittipaldi. I did have one question about that. When you redo a job description, is that done with the union, or how does, what's the process?
It is, and in this case, it was, it was done with Mr. Lassiter.
Okay.
Present, who is the head of the HPAA.
Okay. Let's see. Twelve was the approval compensation for PD. Thirteen is the test, approval of testing coordinator stipend for Lisa Sanfilippo. Then we have the hiring of, for the paras that, for some new paras. One for middle school, number fourteen, another one, middle school, fifteen. We've hired a para lunch aide at Irving, another para at Irving, and a maternity leave elementary teacher, Michelle Olivera. That will be effective, already effective, through February 3, 2019. We have approval of a teacher to provide 180 professional development, that's Nicole And math 180, PD with Ms. Ford. Then we have additional summer hours, the approval of that during the summer for our counselors, one guidance counselor rather, and the two teen pep chaperones, Ms. Osmo and Terri Mitchell. We have some employees that moved up on the pay scale after getting their masters. And number twenty-three is approval of calendar math training with Catherine Bender and Alyssa Roybal. Number twenty-four is approval of BARDA paras for their Fall Conversation Cafe that Michelle talked about earlier. Twenty-five is the change of, approval of change of hours for curriculum writing, changing Todd Krueger's hours of curriculum writing on nutritional science from fourteen hours to four. Then we have more summer curriculum writing hours, Nicole Stahl and Jacqueline Bernstein for nutritional science. Twenty-seven is before and after-school program staff, program assistants, and a nurse that was needed for one of the students. Twenty-eight is some para stipends, twenty-nine para job coach stipend, and then we have number thirty, approval of change of hours for para from seven to 7.5. We have a para transfer, Michael Nastis from middle school to the Irving School, effective this year, a change of teacher to teach additional instructional assignments, Ms. Ford, from Ms. Ford to Rebecca Ale for algebra. And we have the list of bedside tutors that are being recommended, approval of summer employment for ESL teachers, more child, okay, let's see, more summer hours for child study team, testing, IEP meetings. And thirty-six is salaries funded by state and federal grants, so that's all listed. Mostly the pre-K teachers and paras. Thirty-seven, approval of volunteers for the Fall Drama and Spring Musical. Thirty-eight, approval of staff for sixth grade orientation at the middle school. And then lastly, back-to-school night babysitters at Irving Primary School. They are listed as well. And that's the end of exciting personnel. Still awake at the end of the table.
Beautifully read, beautifully read. Does anybody have questions about the approval of hours from seven to seven?
Seven to 7.5.
Or a more interesting topic? Well, interesting to, of course, interesting in a way.
Of course.
I'm curious on ten and eleven, what the actual revisions to the job descriptions were.
Thanks for asking. So in the summer, the leadership team went on a retreat to the Graduate School of Education. We spent a couple of days examining the school year. One of the things the supervisors expressed was they want to have their job descriptions reflect more of what they've been doing in the last year, which is helping the principals recruit staff, hire, they've been sitting in on interview committees, evaluate staff. A lot of that was not codified back in 2016 when we first developed these curricul, these guides. So we developed a chart as a team over the summer, and it showed in really detailed form in four or five broad categories, curriculum work, school scheduling, personnel, what role, what new roles and responsibilities the supervisors would have. Now we want to reflect that in the actual job descriptions themselves. So I think the job descriptions in the board folder show you the changes that were actually made. If they don't, I should email that to you, or in the future, I'll share that with you too. It would help that we could actually see the differences, the two docs. And if not, I can share that with you right now. Would you like me to? I'll just do that to play safe, so you could actually see the changes.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought, oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were.
I'll send it to Rob.
Oh, you sent me to him, oh, I apologize, I'm just sitting here like a goofy grin on my face. All right.
That awkward silence.
It was awkward for me, I was.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, we've been sitting here the last almost two hours and tend to talk about issues and problems and review this financial problem and that curriculum issue and equity and, you know, serious things. But I want to say in personnel that we, as a personnel issue, when I started on the board, two and a half years ago, we had no supervisors. We now have two supervisors. We had one assistant principal up in the middle and high school, we have now two. And we have a safety officer. We have maintenance people working on our payroll and do the work Linda has done, and the others due to Scott's insistence to have those supervisors. And, and the, the restorative practices, justice person who's, I'm sorry, a name, I've?
Luxa, Ms. Luxa.
Ms. Luxa. And it's really, it shows that you can make a change and you can make a difference, and while we're not there, we're really moving in the right direction. So I just wanted to get everyone kind of feeling positive, because so many of the things, we, no, seriously, so many of the things we talk about just feel like, you know, oh, my God, unilateral placements and budget shortfalls and this problem and that problem, but it's really, it's really a wonder that we, given the limited resources and the lack of support from the state, that we can make these things happen. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, and thanks to our administrators for doing this.
Yeah, special thanks to you guys in finance, Linda, Scott, and Mark and the rest of the committee, for fitting these things in. I don't know how you did it.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry. A special thank you to Rob Magaziner.
Rob Magaziner and Darcy.
And Darcy, who's not here. All right. Other personnel comments, questions, or compliments?
I just have a quick question.
Not a compliment?
Clarifying something.
Yes, sir.
For what period of time are these changes for? Is it just like a fifteen-day period, like the budget change, or?
Which change, the, oh, sorry, I'll let Scott answer that. Which change are you talking about?
Just the entire section of, the entire C-section with all the personnel hours and pay and all that.
It's effective immediately, except for some things that we approved retroactively. And I believe that for summer purposes, at the end of the school year, we approve a resolution to allow Linda and Scott to do necessary hiring and make decisions of that nature while we are off, or while we don't have very many board meetings. So those things that are retroactive, we sort of approved under a blanket cover. Now, that's because we trust Scott and Linda to, you know, wisely, obviously.
And so the board is broken into these committees, as you're understanding now, and I'll always reach out to the relevant committee for a green light if I know that eventually the full board has to approve. So, for instance, after the August 20th board meeting, a teacher suddenly resigned who we had hired, ready to start September, so I had to scramble with Mr. Benjamin Arbada Principal to find somebody, and we did. But obviously, there wasn't a board meeting until after the September start of school, so I reached out to Ms. Petropono, who's the head of the Personnel Committee, and then reached out to the rest of the Personnel Committee, and they said, "You know what? Go ahead, we understand." So there's a, there's a process. Also, there are occasions when, in the summer particularly, we might have people doing curriculum work, but they end up going over the, a lot of time that we scheduled them to do, budgeted them for. If they can make a valid case for why they put in those extra five hours, I'll come back to the board and say, "Hey, can we compensate this person an extra five hours? She didn't realize or anticipate it would take all this additional time." That make sense?
Okay, thank you.
It is something that, you know, if we had different administrators and we saw this happening a lot, and there were all these cost overruns, and we were retroactively approving them all the time, that would be a concern. And it's definitely good to ask questions about that, and the public should know that we do keep an eye on it. But, you know, if you ever have a question about a specific expense, of course, ask away.
Okay, thank you.
But in general, we do keep our eye on the ball, particularly our finance people. Mark is the head of finance, and he keeps a very careful eye on the ball, which is wonderful. Okay, any other personnel? And the public should know that we do keep an eye on it. But, you know, if you ever have any question about a specific expense, of course, ask away.
Okay, thank you.
But in general, we do keep our eye on the ball, particularly our finance people. Mark is the head of finance and he keeps a very careful eye on the ball, which is wonderful. Okay, any other personnel comments or questions? All right, then it's time for policy. I don't have too much to say for policy. I don't think we've had another meeting since the last, oh, did I miss?
Equity and excellence.
No, policies is next. But you might want to just add the one change we made to 5512.
Yes, I did want to. No, that's okay. You're used to me skipping things. That is my want these days.
I didn't skip it, Anna. It's actually.
No, no, I didn't. But Linda expected me to because I typically, no, 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 it's true. I don't know the.
She does. You're right.
She does.
Well, I'm just going to barge right in with policy, even if it wasn't before that because it looks like Monique stepped out. I'm going to zoom in. All right. There are three policies up for second reading. In other words, we're going to vote on whether to adopt them tonight. Policy listed B, immigrant justice, has no changes from the last time. Policies A and C, the HIB policy and our equity policy. I just listened to the tape of the, I just watched the tape of a lot of the last meeting that I missed. And Darcy had some suggestions for changes to those policies that didn't make it into the final documents presented to the public. So I just wanted to read them in. And I can send these to Linda if they're, Susan, if they're approved.
I took care of it with Susan.
Oh, you did already? Okay. So just so members of the public are aware, these, am I correct that these changes were not made in the public, publicly available documents?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, they were already made to those?
We put it, we sent it back out to the staff after you made that correction.
I see. Okay, so maybe people, members of the public have already seen these changes?
Could be. If you want to read off the change you made, it's very minor.
Yeah, no, it's, it's pretty minimal. All right, as far as the, the HIB policy, on page 12 of 19, let's see, what number paragraph is it? Under G, paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. At the end of paragraph 5, I'm sorry, am I, this is the HIB policy 5512.
Yes. There are a number of changes. That's all it is.
Oh, there is one change.
It's just repeated over and over.
Oh, I.
Yeah, there's one change that's repeated, isn't it?
Oh, well, I have a, so you'll see on the documents in front of you that there are bolded text and deletions. Those represent changes to our old policy. Now I have an additional change to make, which may or may not show up. I don't think it shows up on the documents on the board folder. This is a single change. It's one that many of you haven't seen before because I only made it like six hours ago, seven hours ago. So there's no reason you would have seen it.
I sent the email.
You sent the email. I sent an email. Because I just, this afternoon, watched a lot of the video of the meeting and I noticed that Darcy had said, I suggest you do this. So I'm putting those things out there for your review. So they're not very exciting changes. Nonetheless, on page 12 of 19 of the HIB policy, at whatever paragraph I said, the end of paragraph 5, Darcy suggested that we make clear that if there is, okay, well, this is talking about how no employee shall investigate a HIB allegation against someone in that employee's own bargaining unit. And no employee shall investigate a HIB allegation against their own supervisor, which sounds obvious, right? And so Darcy suggested we put in a provision for something that happened this year, which is that we may not have any employee available to investigate who meets those requirements. So I'm suggesting, per Darcy, that we add, if no appropriate staff member is available to lead the investigation, the superintendent will appoint an outside investigator. If the investigation concerns a superintendent's alleged conduct, because we want to be complete, not because I'm anticipating anything, the board shall appoint such an investigator. That's something that we have done, but now it's in the policy. The next set of extra changes are to policy 5755, equity in educational programs and services. This is one Darcy, I think Darcy suggested that we include as one of the categories that are protected, immigration status. So we're not, we're going to ensure, we're going to, we're going to do all these things, protecting people in all these different categories, ensuring that they have equal access, religion, national origin, et cetera. I added immigration status to each of those provisions. And, oh, and there was one other thing. Yes. Equity in physical education training on page 2 of 2. Darcy suggested, and I heard some people at the table saying like, yeah, yeah, that sounds good. So I'm proposing that we add equity in physical education training and health education. And then in the first sentence, all school district, all school district physical education programs and health education classes or programs will be coeducational. I don't know if that's controversial with anybody on the board. I sort of couldn't tell from the video. I heard a couple murmurs of, yeah, yeah, that sounded good. So I'm putting it out there.
No, no one here, I don't think, would disagree.
Are you talking about varsity sports teams?
No, this is just gym class.
Gym class.
Later on, we have the stuff about, I didn't change the stuff about equity, about the athletic programs.
I think we had also heard last year from our student reps about how they, they felt that their health classes that spoke about hygiene and reproduction and other types of person, potentially like, you know, embarrassing type conversations would actually be better in a mixed grouping, but in smaller groups. So that they didn't want to have, and we had actually addressed that issue, I believe, right, Scott? Last year, we had done a study of like other school districts and how they broke out their gym classes and other health classes into gender. And we didn't feel that that was in line with our TGNC policy or any other culture change we were trying to make. So I think that we could even safely change that in the health department, not just, you know, gym class.
Oh, sure, yeah.
But I know, I know that it doesn't speak to some of the personnel concerns in the building. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I don't think we need to add the small class size to this policy.
No.
But I do think it's, it's a really good point. I think the fewer, the smaller the class, the fewer people are going to be yelling embarrassing, you know, jokes about the subject.
Yeah, and it's.
That's good.
No, I think this is okay for this policy.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I think that's excellent, yeah. I think a smaller group, less likely to lead to inappropriate joking around.
Or just a greater sense of, you know, trust.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. My son was regaling me with fifth grade, it was a fifth grade sex ed talk that they had last year, and there was lots of yelling from the back and lots of comments from the peanut gallery, as always.
Fifth graders were being immature.
I know, it's hard to believe, right? I'm sure my son was listening carefully with his hands in his lap. Okay, let's see. So any other questions, concerns about policies? Yes, sir. Hit me up. You always have something that I can't answer.
5512, looking at like page 6 to page 7.
Oh, God. This will be the HIB policy, everybody. It's 19 pages long.
Page is 6.
Pages 6, over into page 7?
Just concerned that you're, I'm hoping they're not showing this anyway. This.
Ooh, that's a good point. Let's see. Okay, that's right. The top of page 6, I think I do have the same PDF as you. The consequences and remedial measures may include, but are not limited to, the examples listed below. Then all of the examples are crossed out. Ah, yes, okay. That's a very good point, Rob. I thought we had read this carefully, but I think the redlining got it.
I think that sentence needs to be taken out, don't you think?
Yes. I think so too. Let me just see here.
I think the added one would come out because it, the way they're listed as remedial from policy and then the way the highlighted added section comes in, it doesn't seem to, that one seems to be a little less.
I think top of page 7 is an extra sentence.
Yeah.
The bolded.
Top of that sentence. I think that sentence is unnecessary.
So I would take out the boldface.
Take out that, in addition to, because we already said it.
Otherwise, the changes to the policy seem really good.
Yay. That's a good.
And so, sorry, just to be clear, we're jumping from then, where everything on page 6 that is strike, has a strike through, stays that way.
Yes.
Stays out.
That's correct.
And then we pick back up on, on page 7, examples of remedial, taking out that top.
That's correct.
Okay.
Because we've already said something about, yeah.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Scott, can you convey that to Susan?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So I better propose.
So the board doesn't have any objection to us still going ahead and recommending the approval of this resolution?
Yeah. I mean, I recommend we move to adopt them with the amendments. Okay, thanks for telling Susan. Okay. Other questions, concerns, things that don't make grammatical or other sense? All right. Next is equity in excellence. Monique, please.
Oh, yeah, so we have not met yet, but we have a lot to discuss. So we are going to have a meeting very soon and we'll make sure that we, I'll send out the email with that meeting date and time for the whole board. So whoever wants to drop in and join our conversation and important discussions, you're more than welcome.
That's right. So one, as we may have talked about earlier, one additional board member can attend the equity in excellence meeting without us.
Only one.
Oh, any meeting, yes. But we, I think some of us have been talking specifically about this one.
Only one. Otherwise, it's a quorum.
How many, but we only have, oh, yeah.
If five people, it has to be publicly advertised.
So tonight, tomorrow night's meeting of policy, one person has to drop out.
And I think you have already done so, yes. All right. Someone has already done that. Right. And of course, if somebody does want to come to policy in place of somebody else, they can just ask me and we'll switch someone out. So I guess I would suggest if you want to come to this particular meeting, to email Monique and see what the, if someone else has already signed up or, you know, whatever. All right. So let's see, oh, now, you know what? It says board liaison reports, but this is a voting meeting, right? We're going to vote on these, we're going to vote on these, this is not a workshop meeting.
Correct. It's a voting meeting.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go back to the voting part.
Public comment, I think.
Oh, public comment. Oh, my gosh, yes. All right, sorry. I was confused by the list of board liaison reports, but of course, that's because it was already stated earlier. Okay. Now it is public comment time. Let me find my little thing that I read. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Would anyone like to approach the podium, sign their name and list their address or their affiliation? No. Rob can't make a, oh, yeah, that's, okay. Do you want to make a public comment, Rob? No? Okay. All right. Okay, then it's time to vote. So let's see. Michelle, would you like to move the curriculum items along with whatever amendments we may or may not have discussed?
Yes.
Yeah, now I know.
So I would like to move items 1 through 5.
Oh, I'm sorry. Closer to the microphone, if you mind?
Oh, I'd like to. I'd like to move items 1 through 5.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
One second, sorry. Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
All right, on to finance and facilities. Mark, would you like to move some items?
Yes. Linda, should I move, should I move the items first and then the motion to table second or do it all at once or what's best?
You can do it all at once, it's fine.
Okay, so I'm going to move, thank you. I'm going to move items 1 through 5 and 10 through 17, and then move to table items 6 through 9.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Judy, would you move the personnel items, please?
Sure. I'd like to move items 1 through 39.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, do we need to ask, we should be asking if anybody wants additional discussion, right? I forgot about that part. No, we don't.
Technically, the discussion took place when they did their comment.
I guess there was no public comment, so there's no need to ask. Does anybody have any additional comments? I mean, sometimes after we hear public comment, we would go back and.
Yeah.
But we're not going to.
It's fine.
Okay. Forgot about it. If anybody has a comment, they should just raise their hand. Sorry, did anybody second Judy yet? Did we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please? Without further interruption.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes. Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes, but abstain from 39.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to policies. I would like to move policy item number one with the amendments that we just discussed. Do I have a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFerranti-Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to board liaison reports. What confused me before. All right. Scott, do we have anything from Joshua Chen of Municipal Drug and Alcohol?
No, Josh actually graduated, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a new?
So we're going to have a new guy, but, gal, but the group did not meet yet anyway, so we're good.
Okay. So who selects that person? Is it the, who selects the new student representative?
I believe that Ms. Ozymo, the teen center director.
Oh, okay, all right. We don't have to do anything. Okay. Borough of Public Information, Michelle, did you have it? I'm sorry, Borough of Public Information, I think it's the Borough Public Information?
Yes.
Yeah, not the Borough of, the Borough of Public Information.
The Borough of Public Information.
The Borough of, very talkative.
I was just looking it up because there was an update that was sent to me and now I can't find it unfortunately. So if you could just give me 10 seconds, maybe.
Sure. Why don't we come back to you?
Move on to someone else.
Let's do that. We're going to move on to you, but I'll move on instead to Mag, Mr. Magaziner, Highland
I can't find it unfortunately. So if you could just give me 10 seconds, maybe...
Sure. Why don't we come back to you?
...move on to someone else, and I'll be right back.
Let's do that. We're going to move on to you, but I'll move on instead to Mr. Magaziner, Highland Park Educational Foundation.
Right. We have not met. I'm trying to think. I guess there was a meeting over the summer, but we've met since then as a board, so I think there is one coming up...
Tuesday night.
Tomorrow?
No, next Tuesday night.
Oh, next week.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about that later.
Perfect. All right. Judy, anything from the Commission for Universal Access?
Actually, meeting tonight, so I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Is it always going to be on a board meeting night? Do you want to try to switch with somebody?
Um...
Oh, no, you can't switch anybody. I'm sorry. Do you want to try to find somebody else in the administration?
Yeah. No, I mean, once in a while it doesn't, and I think it was... It didn't used to be Monday nights, but then Tara's class switched to when she's the chair, and so it got to it. So, you know, it's fine.
Okay. You feel like you're able to cover enough of it from the minutes and the meetings that you are able to?
Yeah, there's actually not a lot that relates to...
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm sure Tara would alert you if there was.
Yeah, they alert me.
Okay.
I'm good.
Public Library, does Ms. Fittipaldi have a...
There was a meeting August 27th. There were actually minutes in the board folder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. So everybody should take a look at those, please. Was there anything that required board action in the near future? You know, the library's going ahead with a crazy plan?
No, I'm looking at it now. It's just a recap of some... There was a patron behavior incident, the roof report. Nothing like in terms of relocation. I know that's been a hot topic, but nothing like that has come up so far.
Have we... I mean, this is purely anecdotal, but I... We do, many of us here around the community, that there are occasional issues with alleged behavior problems by our students who like to go after school and do their homework and talk. I'm sure that's on your and Ms. Fittipaldi's radar, trying to work out some kind of an equilibrium with the library?
Yeah. We had a meeting about... When she came up board, I gave her the heads-up that this has been a constant complaint we've gotten.
Wonderful.
So she's aware of it.
Okay.
You know, I don't know how the addition of Mr. Harrison and Ms. Golden Cooper will affect this.
Mm-hmm.
But it's something to consider, whether or not we want to... If issues arise again, have them get involved on some level.
Well, sometimes it's not actually...
Right.
...an issue per se, but a policy that the library might have that might not be as student-friendly.
Right.
So then that's where the problem lies. So they might be enforcing their own policy, but we might have issues with the policy and need our representative to address it.
Sometimes there is a feeling, I don't know how accurate, that the policy is enforced more stringently against students as opposed to against adults who are yakking really loudly on their cell phones. So there's two issues. There may be misbehavior going on. I actually don't know. I'm not there at 3:00. And there is also at least a perception in the community that students are not as welcome as they could be. I'm sure the library doesn't mean to create that impression, but since it is an impression in the community, it's something that should be addressed.
So what would be the process, say, if any member of the board or had a concern and wanted Ms. Fittipaldi to be aware of it?
Thank you for asking.
Could we email?
Would express the concern to me, I would have Ms. Fittipaldi then share it with the board. Now, if it was something that rose to the level that I needed to be involved, I would have no hesitation to attend the meeting.
That... Right.
As a guest. Yeah, I have been to several...
All right, yeah, because she's your representative, so it really should go to you.
Correct. Yeah, she's... I'm not available to be there monthly. She is, but I would step in if necessary.
Okay.
That's good, because we do need to protect that as a space where our kids, when acting within the normal bounds of library behavior, you know, can feel welcome. So the occasional talking, you know, has to be acceptable.
I have a question, actually, about the library issue. Who's... Like regarding jurisdiction, is it really the school's responsibility to, like...
That's a great question. I don't see it as the school's...
I mean, it's after-school hours.
I don't see it as our responsibility, but I do see it as a helpful adjunct to the school, to have a space where kids can go and use the computers for homework. A lot of times, kids are there, at least for the punitive purpose of doing homework. So it would behoove us, I think, to make sure that we in the library agree on the standards that are appropriate. And for us to advocate for standards that are reasonable for our kids, you know, a third grader's not going to be totally...
I tell you what. I mean, if I were ever called over there because of an issue, "I feel good. I need you over here right now."
Oh, my lord.
I would tend to advocate for our students first.
Yes.
And then worry about everything second. I know that sounds terrible. I'm a member of the community, so I have as much at stake in wanting to make sure the library is a safe and secure place.
No, they call you. They're calling you in your position as superintendent.
But I, like I think several members of the board, I see the library as a go-to place for a lot of students. I mean, it's... Where else are they going to go? If they need to do homework, computer access. We don't have an after-school homework club or space really that does it for our students, so they use the library.
And historically, I mean, public libraries and the public schools are supposed to be working in collaboration. So while we don't, you know, we can't tell them what to do, they don't tell us what to do, we still want to have that relationship. And as a governing body, so the library has a board, and the superintendent is allowed to either go to the meetings and be a voting member or send a representative. So we do have somebody that goes and can say, you know, "That's a good idea," or "Maybe you might want to think about it this way," or that kind of thing.
So personally, I don't know the ages of, like, the students that are causing a distraction, but with the opening of the new teen center, I feel like if we promoted it, or like if there was promotion for the new teen center, I feel like if it were like the high school students who were the ones being rowdy, then it would, like, sort of cut down on attendance between the library and, like, the students here if we could, like, sort of advertise it more, or like maybe market it as like a place where they can do everything they did in the library just in a separate place for teens.
I think that's definitely a great idea. I do think that, and I think we should do that. I'm all in favor of advertising that teen center as heavily as possible. But there is also this separate issue of students who are behaving within what we would all consider the norm of sort of student behavior. You know, you're on your computer, but you talk to your friend for a minute in a quiet voice, hopefully. And sometimes there is at least a perception on the part of the community that that is not acceptable library behavior when it's done by children. And again, I have not been in the library at this time period when there's a lot of students there, especially middle school students, is my impression. So I don't know if there's any reality to this, but, you know, those kids, we don't actually want them to have to go to the teen center to do their homework, because it's probably not going to be... I mean, it'd be great if they could go there, but we want them to feel comfortable at the library and be able to use the library's computers. I believe they're going to have... I don't think the teen center will have nearly as many computers as the library will, and many of the teachers here, you know, do like to assign homework that requires use of a computer. So it's important that our students have a place there. And some of that's rowdiness, and some of it's the library perhaps needing to be a little more flexible in their understanding of sort of normal student behavior. I'm sure there's a mix of both.
And I'm wondering if I can just interject, if it would be worthwhile thinking about, as Judy mentioned, the collaboration between the district and library. Could there be, or would it make sense to have some sort of presentation to the library staff about the initiatives that we have here around social emotional learning, culturally sort of representative...
I like that.
...interactions with all students, because I think a part of it is too, some concerns about which kids are being, you know...
Yes. Perceived as rowdy.
...talked to and perceived as being behaviorally disruptive in the library. So I think, you know, we really want to maybe think about having that conversation with library staff, if that would be something to... I don't know who or how or what context that could happen, but I think the library should be aware of this initiative and push, you know, on the district's end. And, you know, these are our children that we're advocating for.
Right.
And a part of that advocacy is also letting the staff there know what we're doing and how we can all work together or be supportive.
So they know how important it is to us that our students can go and feel safe and not feel like, you know, if there's a... There does seem to be a feeling at times that some students are considered rowdier than others, when really the noise level's pretty equal. Yeah, I mean, can we get Mrs. Fittipaldi to do that, or would it be better coming from you, or I don't know?
From me, because I've been steering us in that direction as a district, so it would come from me.
So that's something you can think about and...
Yeah, absolutely.
...brainstorm about. I think we... There was just an... I mean, I know Facebook is not, you know, the New York Times, or... Pick your favorite newspaper that you don't think is fake news.
It's a bane of our existence sometimes.
No, it is. It's a bane of everyone's existence. I mean, there was somebody who reported a story there about what this person perceived to be, you know, biased treatment of students. And of course, I wasn't there, but as long as that feeling exists in the community, it should be addressed. And this was like the first week of school, so that sends a great message to our kids. If in fact, that is, if the person reported it accurately, that's not great. So sooner rather than later would be my hope. Okay, sorry. Next. Shared Services, Darcy's not here. Did you want to talk about shared services, or?
I don't have anything to share. We haven't even met.
[laughing]
That wasn't a pun, intentionally at least. But no, we don't... We haven't met. Now, the meetings, I mean, if anything, it's going to be connected to the meetings Darcy and I have with the mayor and Suzie Wolkowitz, but those haven't kicked off yet, so when that happens, I'm sure I'll have a report for you.
Okay. We'll hear somewhat, a little bit about those meetings, I think, when Mark speaks. Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, that is Ruth Byer. Anybody else been going to those meetings? No, me neither. Okay. POSOC, Parents of Students of Color. Monique, is there anything to report?
They will be meeting next Tuesday. POSOC will be in a meeting next Tuesday, 6:30. Tuesday's the 25th. 6:30 to 7:00 is the closed portion for members, and at 7:00 PM, the public meeting opens, or open meeting, and it will be at the Senior Center on South Sixth Avenue. Another really important event coming up is Back to School Potluck, which is an annual event sponsored by POSOC in collaboration with the teen center, and that's going to be September the 28th. So that's Friday, I think, 6:00, 3:00 to 6:00, at the park behind the high school. If it's raining, they will be moved inside the cafeteria. It's potluck, so everyone's welcome to bring a dish. And the cool part about this year's potluck is that there will be a football game. I guess there will still be a football game at 7:00 after, or maybe soccer. I don't know.
I think soccer.
I can't make any...
Football in the European sense.
Right, soccer game. It is fly... At 7:00 right after. So it's always a great time going to potluck and just kind of having this huge community fair of families and children, multi-generational sort of gathering to kick off this semester.
Monique, I'll attend the HP POSOC meeting, and then I'm going to hop over to the foundation meeting at Foundation after that.
Excellent. Okay, let's see. Human Relations, that's me. We're meeting in a couple days. Board of Health, Mark?
Yeah, we met last Thursday. A couple of issues came up. One had to do with a question from one of the student reps to the Board of Health about scheduling at the high school, which I turned over to Scott, and he answered to my satisfaction. It's really not a very complex question, and I'll be reporting back to the Board of Health on that. And then another student had a question about what she called accommodations, which is the question of if you get a letter from a doctor about, let's say, taking the test in more time than other students, what does the district do about that? And again, I've passed that off to Scott, who's going to be working with Suzie as regards the, you know, state law and special education regulation and so on. And again, that'll be one way or another back to the Board of Health at the next meeting, because what I want to say is I won't be there at the next meeting. I'm going to be traveling, so if anyone would like to go. It's very, very, very interesting, and you learn a lot, you meet some new students, have very good ideas, and they appreciate the input. Because a lot of what they talk about is about the schools. So if anyone wants to go, just contact me, email me, and I'll get you all the information on the meeting.
What is the date again? Did you already say it, and I missed it?
It's... No, I didn't. I believe it's... If it's a Thursday, October 9th, I may have my dates written down.
Okay. It's a Thursday coming up?
If it's a Thursday, it's October 9th. It's 7:00 at the meeting room downstairs at Borough Hall.
Okay. Wonderful. Thanks. Green Team, Rob Roslevich. Anything for the first week of school. Darcy's... Oh, go ahead, Scott.
But I'll just add that we have a kickoff, but Tree Grant launch meeting, I think, is coming up, right? August, October?
That's right.
Right now. October 4th. October 4th, 3:30. Melinda McDermott organized this big meeting, which is going to also include anybody who has had a vested interest in the Tree Grant. We received $30,000 worth of trees to plant around the school district.
Nice.
So that means it's going to be a planting session.
You mean, these are like saplings, or these are not tiny seeds?
I don't know. This is one area. I wish I'm not experts. I don't know yet.
You could spend $30,000 on one tree.
On one mature tree, probably, right?
Yeah, sorry. You could spend $30,000 on lots of little ones.
A forest of seeds, I guess.
A forest of seeds.
All right. Well, I look forward to seeing the pictures from that event. All right. Delegate to New Jersey School Boards, Darcy. Middlesex School Boards, delegate, Rob.
I'm doing the report.
Okay. Should we go back? Thank you. Should we go back to Michelle on... What was your first one? The Public Information Borough stuff?
Public Information Committee, yes.
Committee of the Borough.
So there were two items that were included in the recap as kind of action items. They're looking for two different things. Volunteers, specifically for HPTV. They're looking at different avenues to solicit volunteers to film the council and the board meetings. And they were thinking about looking at Rutgers, I mean, you know, backups and other types of volunteers that are necessary, give someone a break once in a while.
Yeah, sure.
They're looking at Rutgers and the Highland Park High School students to fulfill their civic and community service hours. So they were looking at ways to kind of promote that ask for volunteers, and any types of leads, they would greatly appreciate. And then the website, the Highland Park Borough website, they're looking for a group of people who can meet and try to work within the constraints of the current site to make some simple changes. And they're going to be asked to work with Monica, who works for the district. I'm sorry, the Borough, not the district. So they're not doing a complete makeover, but they'd like to create some changes, and they want some volunteers for that. And they were also talking about the alert system and wondered how they could get email alerts out to people. I'm not sure what the conversation was there, but the two most important things were volunteers for HPTV and the website.
Scott, is that something we can put out through some channel in the school district to indicate that they're looking for volunteers? Or are they doing it? Are they advertising somewhere in the schools?
They wanted help with it.
Ah.
So any type of maybe email blast or something?
Oh, sure, absolutely. But how do I get the information to email blast out?
Could forward the contact info?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay.
Cool.
I'll do that.
Perfect. All right, so that takes care of HPTV for you two, I would assume. Okay. Have I left anyone out? Anyone? No. Okay. Time for the President's Report. Darcy's not here, and Mark is going to discuss the listed item, potential implications for the school district of the Borough, potential implications for the school district of the Borough considering the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot program for new development. And we look forward to hearing your presentation on that, Mark. I'm laughing, but it's a serious subject.
I'll try to be brief and to the point. The state has a law that defines a pilot program, meaning it's not a pilot program like you're trying something. It's a program with the name "Pilot," which stands for "Payment in Lieu of Taxes."
It's a great choice of acronym, really. Not confusing at all.
It's a terrible acronym. For two hours, I thought that's what it was, a pilot program. It's... The program allows a municipality to give developers a tax abatement for, depending on circumstance, tax abatement for up to five years, or in other circumstances, for up to 30 years. The way the money from that tax abatement is done, since it's not taxes, it's money paid in lieu of taxes to the municipality, and the municipality keeps 95% of the money, and the county gets 5%, and the school district gets 0%. Now, with that as backdrop, I want to add that Senator Sweeney has a bill somewhere in the state senate to change the law so that the school districts get their fair share. And one discussion I've had with Darcy about this would be to support that bill at the delegate assembly. So when Darcy's back in our October meeting, I think she'll bring that up. We may not agree with everything the state senator has in his programs, but this is one that's clearly was mis-thought when the program came into being. Although, I want to say that Linda and I were having a discussion of this before the meeting at the end of finance, and it may be that it has somewhat less bad effect on the school taxes, but rather, much more money may be raised by the town, and the district would still not get any part of that. I'm going to call it extra money. In any event, and I'm going to be discussing that with her to understand this better. So we learned that the town was thinking of doing this in Highland Park. The... There's a property on 31 River Road. It's River Road and Walter Avenue. The owner's been looking to sell. A developer is interested, but the developer said that the five-year program of abatement wasn't enough to make a profit. And, oh, and almost any development that goes into Highland Park qualifies for the five-year abatement because the whole town has been declared an area in need of rehabilitation, I believe, by the planning board. So that means virtually any development that comes in could be viewed as being allowed to have a five-year abatement for the developers. By the way, one of my comments, and then we met with the mayor and two councilmen, Darcy, myself, and Scott, met with two councilwomen and our mayor, Mayor Brill Miltler. My comment, one of my comments is I've never heard of a developer losing money in Highland Park. And, you know, five-year abatements, 30-year abatements, then they really make a fortune. And, you know, we have the rights to let them build, and I even used the words, "We have them over a barrel. They don't have us over a barrel." That didn't go over very well. In any event, this developer is asking for a 30-year abatement, or up to a 30-year abatement. The five-year abatement wasn't enough. So we met with them. The mayor made it clear that this is just the first of several pilot programs she's considering for Highland Park as she looks towards future downtown development, redevelopment programs. She repeatedly spoke of keeping the schools whole in terms of sharing the funds collected. The schools collect 61% of the funds that the municipality and county levy on the residents of the town, of the borough. So we discussed that. The mayor repeatedly talked about keeping the schools whole. The meeting didn't go very well. The first thing was that the mayor's idea was that we would capitate per student. So if this developer puts in 40 units, we would agree to get some amount of money per student that lives in the development. We were very clear that school taxes are a responsibility we all share, and it provides for the common good, not just a surcharge on those who have children living in those apartments. It also turns out that the idea of paying per child could be something, given the costs of educating the children, would be more than the money they actually collect, or could be virtually zero. So it's a... We felt and said this was not a very good idea. So I quickly said, "We think if you want to keep us whole, we should get 61% as we do of all taxes. This is money in lieu of taxes," to which one of the council people present, Councilwoman Kim, said that the council would never agree to that. So that did not go very, very well.
Did she say... I'm sorry.
She said they would never approve that.
Did she say why, while she was speaking for the entire council?
No, she did not. She did not... Oh, and the mayor didn't correct her. So we felt that if these programs come in, this is going to siphon tax money off. The schools won't get it, although Linda and I need to talk... The schools won't get it, although Linda and I need to talk to give credit, what creditors do exactly how much and how the money is lost to us. So that's how the meeting ended pretty well. The steps in this next were that the council, Darcy and I attended the council meeting last Tuesday. The council voted to send the idea of turning that specific property into an area in need of redevelopment, meaning they could make a 30-year program with the developer. And on Thursday, I believe, last week, so they were going to send that on to the planning board. And last week, the planning board did meet. They also wondered why, this is hearsay, this is what we heard back, because I didn't attend the meeting, but they also wondered why we needed to do a pilot program with developers. And yet, they passed it on for a professional to evaluate the property. So they're hiring a professional to look at the property and see what state the property is in and whether they could recommend to the council that this is an area in need of redevelopment so that the council could go forward. It seems to be on a very fast track, and I should just say that Darcy and I have discussed this since we both went to the meeting. She's Board President and I'm Finance Chair. We both were able to get to the meeting with the mayor and the two councilwomen. We're very, very unhappy about this, siphoning money off from the schools. And for instance, that property brings in $80,000 a year right now. If apartments went there, the developer's talking about 40 apartments, apartments went there, they may get hundreds of thousands of tax dollars from that property, except they won't because they'll negotiate it down as a payment in lieu of taxes. And then whatever comes in, we won't get our, in principle, our piece of the 80 that we've been getting thus far, and the town will get a lowered amount of the potential hundreds of thousands of taxes. So this is not very good.
We'll still get the portion, though, that it's on the land because the pilot--
Yes, I'm sorry. I missed that. We will get a portion of the land. The pilot program allows you to collect the--
The land portion.
The land portion is of the taxes, does come to the, well, taxes are appropriated for the land but not for the building, and we will get a piece. But that's typically a very small percentage of the taxes a property pays.
You previously said it was 80,000 currently, so that would be 61%.
It's about 50 grand that we would lose. Again, in principle, it was--
If it were the same 80.
Yes, if it were the same, it's likely to be much more.
It's going to be much more. And do we know who this developer is?
Yeah, I heard a name, and I can't remember it. I thought about it throughout the meeting. I'm sorry, I'm not holding it.
I always somehow think that there's some key involved in the who.
It's a developer who's done building in Highland Park for many, many, many years. But the problem with this, from our perspective, is certainly the lost money, but it's the precedent and the plan to do this in multiple places so that we lose the tax revenue we are getting. You know, if redevelopment went along Raritan Avenue, and, oh, and by the way, if a property goes in and it's not dwellings, but it's commercial, not only don't we get any money for the property, we get money for the land, but they're not allowed to give us any money. So some towns, like Woodbridge, have given the fair share part of the money to the school district. They've built stuff for the school district with the extra money. But they don't have to, by law.
So without that money and with the existing budget, wouldn't that simply mean that taxpayers would carry the burden of the additional amount? Of an additional amount? Taxpayers would get a bigger hit?
Yes, yes, exactly.
And there's the idea that we would be able to recover some number of thousands of dollars per student in the development, which would be, you know, a benefit to taxpayers. No, but I agree. There's not a linear relationship between the number of students in a development and the amount of money you need to educate those students. It might be more than we need, it might be less than we need.
But that actually came off the table as soon as we said that's not fair. That just kind of disappeared.
Oh, now it's not even--
Well, I mean, we didn't go further with that. We just said, "How about you turn over 61 cents?"
Exactly, right. On the dollar.
Of what you get to us.
Right.
You know, and it's complicated because, as Rob points out, we don't get for, we would already get something for the land.
It's for the improvements that--
It's the improvements that we don't get. Anyway, we were very, both of us, very distressed by this, and that's why I'm bringing it up to the board in public. And, you know, I would hope that if a lot of this is going to happen, that the public is paying attention because this is going to affect their school system.
With all the talk we have around town about how our property taxes are so high because we don't have enough ratables, you know, now we're maybe getting some ratables, so, you know, let's lower our taxes a little bit or at least not increase, you know.
And I hate to say this, but it's so disingenuous to build that beautiful teen center, right, with all of the council members in front cutting the ribbon, with all the appearances of wanting the best for our children and then doing something like this. Yeah, distressing is--
Well, it hasn't happened yet. It hasn't happened yet.
Hopefully, we'll reach an agreement with them.
I hope we will reach an agreement with the Borough that if they make a 10-year deal with a builder, by the way, the 10-year deal, of course, doesn't include the land. We get our taxes from the land. And it also, over 10 years, the amount, the taxes start getting paid along the way, so by year 10, most of the tax money is collected. So we would hope that we get a deal such that we, it's not exactly tax money, but it goes up to what the real tax money would be on the property. The hope is that, the hope is that we can sign a deal for all of the years that they negotiate, and we're in a position where we can, we can get our fair share. I would hope that, I visited the property. I was so upset, I walked around the property. I talked to the real estate agent, who's a commercial real estate agent, to get a sense for the price and what's being planned and so on. And the property, you know, to a layman's eye at least, doesn't look like something that's run down and ready to fall and needs redevelopment. But we'll see what the planning board's expert has to say. And the developer threatens to leave if he doesn't only get the five years, and I'm saying, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Are there still medical offices in that?
Yeah, there are medical offices.
So what does the town get out of this?
They get a lot more money directly to them.
And they get a developer, or they're claiming that they weren't going to get one, you know.
Right, and I think a goal of the council is to, and the mayor, is to have the center of town where there's clearly eyesores revitalized. And the deal with the developer, which would take over from like first or second down to third on the north side of the street, that fell through because the cleaner there wouldn't move, and there was some objection from people who lived around the library about giving the library building away to that developer, which was part of the deal. And so I think that there was some sense and feeling that if the council and mayor could make deals with multi-year tax abatements, they could get developers to build, and--
Well, tax abatements aren't uncommon. We're talking about--
It's not.
Yeah. We're talking, what's the fishy part would be the kind of screwing of the school district.
Which really makes--
Right.
It makes this place, you know--
It's a little fishy.
--attractive to residents. I mean, I don't know why you would put a hole in the school budget if what you're trying to do is revitalize your town.
Because on the other end of that abatement, you have a higher tax that comes to the town and to the school district. Hopefully, it's negated by the number of students that come in. So hopefully, at the end, if you give him an abatement that allows him to develop the property so that at the end, the taxes are, right now, they're at about $90,000, but if at the end of his improvements, at the end of that 10-year, 15-year period, whatever it is, the town is now getting $200,000 and it's added five students, you know, that's a net gain for the district. If it's $200,000 and it added 45 students, then it might be a net gain, loss for the district, but it's hard to evaluate.
You cannot guarantee what students you get. First of all, you could get five students, but they could all be out of district placements. And there goes way more than 200,000.
But in the meantime, if the town does nothing and does not improve the property, does not negotiate with developers, then they have a $90,000 property that over time remains a $90,000 property.
But I think that's very short sighted.
Nobody's saying not to do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to just say, Rob, that in that meeting, I spoke up one question. Do you against development and are you against abatements? I'm not against abatements. Darcy is not against abatements. The question is twofold. Why give 30 years if you can give much less? Number one. Number two, and I said to them, "Get me in the room with the developer." I did a lot of, in my private life, a lot of negotiations with much tougher people from other countries than I imagine we would see with a developer. And so I don't see why we would give away more than five years, maybe 10, but not to be talking about 20 and 30 years. The second thing is, do it in a way that keeps the schools whole, which, again, the mayor repeatedly said she wants to keep the schools whole, and I'd like to keep her to that because otherwise, you know, I visited the Highland Cliffs property that's being sold now just to get an idea of what they're doing and how it might affect the district. That's the property at the beginning of town on Raritan. First thing that the rental agent said when I asked about taxes, she said, "Well, the taxes are high, but you have the most excellent school system in Middlesex County." And I was very happy. I didn't say I was on the school board. I was very happy to hear that. That won't be the case if the money is siphoned off.
So, but that one is a, those are sales property. Those are--
Those are commercial. Yeah, they are, no, no, not commercial. Those are condos.
Those are residential, but they're condos.
They're condos.
But this would be--
Rentals. 40 rentals.
Right.
40 rentals. Anyway, that's the report, and we're going to try to keep on top of it. Hopefully, the expert says the land isn't, the property isn't in need of redevelopment, and the most harm that could be done to the schools is a five-year program. And indeed, in other parts of town, that kind of program. And hopefully, we can have a nice negotiation with the council and come to an equitable agreement, as the mayor has said.
Okay, and in the meantime, I think Darcy is going to prepare a draft resolution, and we can discuss that in more detail and see how people feel about it at the next meeting. And we can all go home and do some research and think about this and further tweak our positions.
When I just remembered, I believe a third council, I said that Councilwoman Wolkowitz was there and Councilwoman Kim was there, but I believe the new, the new councilman, Mr. Hale was there, Matthew Hale was there. So we definitely had a good--
Spirited.
Spirited conversation.
Excellent. Thank you for representing us there.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. I see the next thing on our agenda is board goals. I also see it's 10:10.
Can I interject one thing about our student reps?
Oh, I apologize, yes.
Typically, we kind of let you guys loose at about 10 o'clock.
I meant to say that, yes. I forgot. Yes, you guys are welcome to leave, really, at any time.
I tried pushing him out the door, and they said, "Uh-oh, we're staying."
Oh, you did this already? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I gave him the signal, but--
You're welcome to leave anytime. We love having you here.
Get us out of here.
What?
Trying to get any of us out of here.
We're getting ready to leave.
Say what you want to say.
I propose that we save the discussion of board goals until next week. How do people feel about that? Is there any consensus?
Yes.
We're with you.
We're with you.
We're with you.
Anybody strongly the other way? Okay, let's do that. Old Business Parallel Discipline Reporting. Scott, this is obviously a subject that the board feels very strongly about. How long is the presentation?
Since the beginning of the school year. So we now only report through Genesis?
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant, how long was your presentation under Old Business? Is this like a half an hour presentation on parallel?
So you're asking how long the--
How much time do you need right now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just a minute. I just wanted to very quickly update everybody to let you know that--
Even an hour presentation, we're going to skip it.
There was some concern expressed by the community at the board last meeting that there were, it was like a duplication of efforts, particularly at Bartle, in our reporting system. But we, the Bartle staff had already been talking about moving straight to Genesis, so we just pulled that trigger and starting September 6th, when the kids came back, they've had their staff go right into Genesis if they ever had behavior issues, if they want to record. That's happening now at Bartle, the middle of a high school.
That's great to hear.
Excellent.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to Bartle staff, who might be involved in that. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Oh, whoa, 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 sorry, sorry.
New business.
What?
New business.
Oh, God, new business. I'm sorry. I apologize. And public comment. I know I skipped everything. I'm so sorry.
Other than that?
Other than that, yeah. Now I'd like Rob to do an interpretive dance. Okay. New Business, number 19. Does anyone have any new business?
Nope.
Someone better have new business after all those chastisements.
I have a question for Scott.
Of course.
And it goes back to something that happened somewhere online, and it was in relation to the environmental science requirement and the courses for environmental science, environmental science sustainability. Looking back, I can't find any record of us ever actually approving either of those courses.
Yeah, I don't remember that either.
I remember voting for the program guide, and then the discussion was that it would be reviewed further for how exactly those standards would be applied, but looking back, I can't find us ever actually approving either of those two courses.
I certainly don't remember us approving them to be requirements either. That struck me as surprising.
Yeah, we discussed it, and it was, and we voted the following week on the program guide for some reason. Now, I don't think we've ever actually voted on the program guide.
I vaguely recall a curriculum revision, a curriculum guide approval form passing through the curriculum committee.
The form actually is like in the system, like our documents section, but I can't find us ever voting on it in any meeting. I can't find any record of it in the minutes.
Let me research. I'll have Susan and I'll go back to agendas and see if in fact it showed up. It showed up, I mean, the curriculum committee has to approve that curriculum before it was filed.
Right, because I think from Mr. Lassiter's letter, in terms of the requirement for the high school students has been rolled back.
Well, that we definitely recognize there was no approval for. But the curriculum guide, that I'll check on and get back to the board about. I'll shoot a quick email once I find out what the story of that is.
Have we looked into how that happened? I mean, the board normally would vote on imposing a requirement for graduation, correct?
Uh--
And there's some things we vote on, some we don't.
Yeah, whether it's indirectly through the program guide or directly, but we confirmed that the board didn't approve it. The policy doesn't reflect it, which is why we, Mr. Lassiter put a letter out to--
So are we going to look at what happened in our mechanism and our system that led to that happening without an approval? I'm not asking for like specifics, but, you know, clearly, like, we should have voted on it before it was made a requirement. Have we looked into how it happened, that it was sent out as a requirement without the board voting on it? I don't need a report from you, I just want to know.
I think there was an assumption that at some point the board approved it. I verified, no, it never did. This was when we first found out through Facebook.
Can we figure out how--
Thanks to Facebook that there was concern about it.
Can we figure out how this happened, so it doesn't happen again? That's my concern.
I think I made it clear to the powers that be that there has to be a certain process in place. You have to have the board policy reflect it because we do have a policy on graduation requirements. In fact, we're looking at, we were going to look at it tomorrow night as a policy committee. We're going to wait until October. I think, look, I have a feeling that there were some things that went down in the past without proper procedure, and every once in a while, when they crop up, I have to remind people, no, there's actually a procedure for this.
Sure, right, right.
This is one of those examples. You can't just go roughshod, assume things without having proper protocols in place.
Now, it is a little confusing sometimes to find, I find on the website, it can be confusing to figure out what we voted on and what specifically we voted on when. I mean, do administrators have a good handle on how to do that? I mean, it looks like Rob did the research that I didn't do to figure out exactly what we voted on and what we didn't. Is there, are they empowered to like figure this out?
I gave you a great example. Remember the whole issue around the .5, the weighted credit and the extra five points?
I don't remember that, Scott. We didn't talk about that, did we? No, 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 okay.
That was a great example of the courtesy we had to pay the board and then eventually had the board approve through the program guide before we went down and actually made it happen, so.
Okay.
That didn't happen, though, with environmental science, so.
Okay.
That's why we took a couple of steps back before we could do anything.
Okay. Hopefully, they know that there's a checklist of things they should do before implementing a requirement. Look at the board policies, look at the, you know, search the meeting minutes to see.
And I'll verify that, assuming we did, that the environmental science curriculum was actually approved by the board.
Excellent. Thank you so much.